Good evening, it's six o'clock. We will now begin the October 22nd meeting of the City Commission. Will you please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? Oh, sorry. Uh, who's, thank you, Jared, would you call?
Mayor Adam Jack.
I'm here.
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Here.
Mr. Minton.
Here.
We have four Commissioners present, the quorum of three is met.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, do we wish to allow public comment this evening during this work session?
Yeah, I would move that we allow public comment.
Second.
Okay, um, we have a motion from Commissioner Opelt to allow a public comment and a second from Commissioner McCullough. Jared, will you please take the role?
Commissioner McCullough.
Yes.
Commissioner Opelt.
Yes.
Commissioner Minton.
Yes.
Mayor Adam Jack.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Our initial topic this evening is discussing the addition of source of income discrimination in housing to the nondiscrimination ordinance. I would like to preface this by saying this commission has not made any type of decision about this. We've not had a conversation about this other than to raise it as something we wish to learn more about. Hence, it's on a work session, uh, meeting, agenda. It's an opportunity for us to learn as well as to be public to the, with the community and to engage with you on, so that being said, Katie, may I have your?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Katie Jackson, City Attorney. As the Mayor said, we have a discussion item tonight. I was asked to provide some of the broader legal frameworks for source of income discrimination, discrimination ordinances. Um, we'll go, kind of go through that. Here's our agenda tonight. We'll review what we already have, talk about some of these ordinances and, and the logistics for other cities to get to that point in their own cities, and then we'll ask for some feedback from the commission. As background, the city of Manhattan already has adopted a nondiscrimination ordinance. We sometimes refer to it as an NDO. Um, we've had it for more than 20 years. We have changed it over the years, most recently in 2016. It contains a policy statement that we are against discrimination on these bases listed on the slide, and it applies in every, what they call the three contexts, which are employment, public accommodations, and housing. We only enforce in the city of Manhattan discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity. Um, that was a change that we made in 2016 when we made some other changes, and that's because there were state and federal agencies who enforce discrimination in the other contexts, on the other protected classes. We have not had any complaints on the basis of sexual orientation and gender identity. There could be a variety of reasons. One theory that we have, that I have, is that shortly after we adopted that ordinance, the state and federal agencies started accepting complaints on these bases. Um, the state started accepting it after a United States Supreme Court decision, and the EEOC started enforcing it after an executive order. So almost immediately after we, we started this in the city of Manhattan, there were higher powers with more authority than the city of Manhattan to respond to these complaints. This is an outline of our city complaint process. In your packet, there is also a chart at the back page of the staff memo that's provided to you. The flowchart's kind of a good illustration of it. I'm not going to go through it other than to say that this process follows the type of process if you filed a complaint with the Kansas Human Rights Commission, or the EEOC, or a similar federal agency in another context. These are the common steps. We do these, um, we would do these, as I said, just for the two bases. Um, and under the current ordinance, they would be investigated by the city attorney's office or our designee. A hearing officer would be our municipal judge, and any appeal or dispute or rising out of it would go to the Riley County District Court. It's important to note that our ordinance does not make the city of Manhattan what's called a civil rights enforcement agency. The city of Lawrence, which we'll talk about in a minute, is a civil rights enforcement agency, which means they have broader authority to impose penalties if they find that discrimination has occurred. In Manhattan, if we received a complaint and it went through the process and we found that discrimination had occurred, the only possible penalty that we can currently assess is up to $500 in a civil penalty. And as I mentioned before, um, if there's any opposition to the process, that we, the city, would have to bring this action in a district court. So just some background, some broader background on source of income discrimination in housing. So I mentioned the three contexts before. This, that being housing, employment, and public accommodations. Source of income discrimination has only been regulated, as far as I know, in the housing context. Right now, there's no federal or state law that prohibits, and I'm just going to probably call it SOI discrimination in housing, but if you go to the HUD website, they have a map of cities, counties, and states that have adopted laws to prohibit SOI discrimination. In our area, I, we only have two cities that have adopted an ordinance to prohibit SOI discrimination. I'm going to talk a little bit about each city because I think that their experiences with it are really helpful as background as the commission has this discussion. This is some language, it's from the Lawrence ordinance, but it's, it references what they describe as SOI discrimination, but if I were to summarize it, I would say that it's a practice, as it says, if you have a landlord or a homeowner who doesn't, will not either rent or sell to someone who's getting some type of federal assistance, and there's examples up there of the most common types of federal housing assistance. Lawrence's ordinance is a little broader. Um, it, it is, of course, include SOI discrimination, but they also prohibit discrimination in housing on the basis of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, uh, the survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, or stockings, and stalking, and based on immigration status. So theirs is a little broader, that was all part of their ordinance. I wanted to talk about the Lawrence adoption process, so we have an idea of how cities have walked through these issues. And Lawrence started this in 2020 with their Human Relations Commission. And I talked about Lawrence as a civil rights enforcement agency. Their Human Relations Commission is a board, an advisory board, to their Human Relations Division, which is part of their legal department. And their Human Relations Commission did a study and took on, um, different ordinance, they studied the ordinances and made recommendations to their city commission of changes they wanted to see. The Human Relations Commission underwent that process for about two years. They presented a draft ordinance that had the SOI discrimination and other ordinance changes unrelated to this topic to their city commission. As you can see, within a month, they had, excuse me, the city commission asked the staff to hold a meeting with stakeholders. I should say that when they, just to highlight, when they went to the commission in December 22, they had a draft ordinance. That was, that work had been done, so the commission could read what it would look like and answer, and the staff could answer specific questions. Their city commission instructed staff to have a stakeholder meeting, which was very well attended. They did ultimately adopt the ordinance that I've talked about in February, and it went into effect in June. Um, I did put a note on here that soon after the adoption, the, a lawsuit was filed against the city by a group of landlords. They're contesting the constitutionality of this ordinance and several other legal bases. While the city won at district court, it has been, the landlords have appealed, and this lawsuit about whether or not this ordinance is constitutional and permissible in Kansas is currently in the Kansas Court of Appeals. I asked Lawrence, and they said that they expect a decision within a year, so sometimes between now and next October. As it moves through the system, we'll get a better idea of that, but that, that gives you some background. I'll talk about the other city, and then I'll get into a few, few other comments about how they implemented these ordinances. Kansas City, Missouri, is the other city in our region that has this type of ordinance. Theirs is a little bit more of, um, kind of a ground swell for the ordinance. It started with what they, they have a Kansas City tenants' union that's very active. You can see that they were lobbying for this starting in 2019. It didn't come to the city, um, for action until 2023, and their mayor drafted and proposed an ordinance. They're a very different form of government. Their mayor actually proposes bills or ordinances that they consider, and they adopted it in January of '24, and it became effective last year. And that one made national news, if anyone had, had followed it, it was quite, um, quite a bit about it. So talking a little bit more, I want to talk a little bit more about what's happened after they adopted these ordinances, just as more background. I mentioned before that Lawrence is a civil rights enforcement agency, we talked about that, and that they have broader authority than the city of Manhattan. So they can, um, if they, if they get a complaint of source of income discrimination in housing, and they find that it's a valid complaint, and they go through their process, they can actually require what we call specific performance, which means they can force a landlord to rent to that tenant or to sell that house, and they can also, um, assess fines up to $50,000. That's a graduated fine that, that increases if that landlord or that property owner has increased, like, first offense, second offense, and so forth. As I mentioned before, they, they have, um, this is in their legal department. The complaints are received, and they're reviewed by an assistant city attorney and their legal assistant. They get, they get about, they've gotten about 10 complaints a year so far. Not all of those complaints are relevant to SOI discrimination, um, but if they are, then they are actually forwarding these complaints for investigation to an outside law firm. They don't have the staff in-house to take the time to investigate these things. Um, if there's probable cause of a discriminatory act, then they try to conciliate it in-house or they use an out-of-house attorney, depending on how complex it is. If they have any issues or any appeals, they hire a different law firm to go to district court, and they currently have one case in district court where they've hired legal counsel. I asked them about funding. They just budget for this. They, the city just absorbs all the cost, the legal costs and other expenses related to this ordinance. Um, they do expect that, um, the number of complaints are likely to increase because more people are becoming aware of the ordinance. Um, and they did say that sometimes the complaints are fairly straightforward and, um, don't take a lot of time, and others are very contentious. I think it's important, I did include in the staff memo links to Lawrence's informational website about source of income discrimination. I think it's really important to note that both of these cities, when they implemented these ordinances, they've done, um, a really extensive educational campaign, and that's partially so that, it's part, it's obviously so people can make complaints if they think that discrimination has occurred, but it's also that they are myth busting, the misconceptions about the ordinance. So they said that, that, that's been really important. They took the time to develop that website with FAQs and other information, and they also, they told me that they send out information to landlords, landlord groups, and tenants to really continue to make sure that the ordinances, like, they've educated properly on their ordinance. Oh, I, the, one other thing I did want to note, and same with Casey Mo, is that in Lawrence, they have actually housing divisions, um, and they do, so their housing offices, while they aren't involved with their discrimination complaints, they do provide kind of what I call subject matter expertise on the vouchers and other things. So that has offered them some support. And the attorney who's handling them, I mentioned to her that I hadn't seen her at one of our city attorney meetings, CLEs, our continuing legal education, she said, "Well, I just go to housing CLEs now." So, so they really have focused a resource on this topic. I just want to point that out. That's how they've, they have implemented this. Um, Kansas City, Missouri, is similar. They also are a civil rights enforcement agency. They have what they call a civil rights and equal opportunity office. They have two full-time employees in that office. They also have adopted an ordinance that gives them the ability to impose more extensive penalties. Um, I provided a link to their educational campaign and outreach. I couldn't get the same statistical information from them in time, um, so I don't have that for them, but I did note, just kind of looking at their website and looking at their resources, they have a lot of more tenant, um, resources and, um, than either Lawrence or Manhattan. They actually have, um, an office of tenant resources where they provide free legal counsel to tenants in Kansas City, Missouri, so they fund legal services for them, and they have other city housing offices and resources. So I'm not saying that should play into this, I'm just trying to give the framework that these ordinances function within these cities. Um, we, we do have some local housing resources, a couple of them are here. Obviously, these don't necessarily, they don't take any complaints related to source of income discrimination. Um, tonight, as the mayor mentioned, this is just a, the commission had asked for some background on these, and an idea of how they are adopted and implemented, um, so we've provided that research for you tonight. So we have a couple of questions for, um, your consideration that we'd like feedback on. Um, just, we can wait until if, your discussion or input from the public, but if you do want to proceed, um, we would, would like some initial feedback on the scope of enforcement, and then some feedback on the process to, and I should say, it says undertake for adoption, but to consider the ordinance. Both cities did extensive community stakeholder work before they brought an ordinance back to their governing body. Both cities had staff time assigned to it so that they could get the education, the right education and information out there to their communities. So any input that the commission, if they, if you decide to, to continue to explore this type of ordinance, any guidance the commission has on that. And that's all we, I have for my presentation. Happy to answer any questions for me.
Thank you, Katie, and thanks for taking the time to do such a thorough job.
Katie, um, why doesn't this just fall under our housing, not discrimination of housing that we already have?
Let me go back. Um, we don't have a, what, so when you have a discrimination ordinance, you specify what's called the protected class, which is the status of the person, that they could be discriminated on that basis, and then you have the context. And are, we do, we do handle complaints that arise in housing, but not on the basis of source of income or anything related to that. If the commission wants to explore this, then that is, Commissioner, that's what we would amend. We would amend this part of Chapter 10 to add source of income discrimination, but then we'd have to address whether or not we're going to enforce it the same way the other communities have. If you just put it in a policy statement, we could do that, but then we wouldn't have any enforcement practice in the city of Manhattan.
So what falls under prohibiting discrimination in housing that we've got now?
All the bases listed there, race, sex, familial status, miller's, that, that list. So what you would do is we would add, uh, source of income discrimination. We'd have to define what that means. We'd add it to this general prohibition of discrimination. That's step one. That's our policy of the city against discrimination. If the commission wanted to enforce complaints on that basis, then we would have to address it in the enforcement section.
So we do have national origin, so that would cover immigrants, right?
Yes, I mean, that, that is in our ordinance, yes, yeah. We, we don't enforce those, though, because those can be enforced at the state or federal level.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, can we just walk through the, the process for someone who is, um, receiving a, a housing choice voucher? And I know it's kind of different, specific, depending on what specific voucher you get, but can we just generally walk through that process?
I'm not a housing expert.
Can, I mean, I don't know. Is Erin or Kelm willing to come and speak to us? I think this all started with that, um, with some of the work Kelm did and some other discussions, so I think just shedding some light on that is helpful.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Erin, just tell us who you are and where you live, please.
I'm Aaron Estabrook. I'm the Executive Director for the Manhattan Housing Authority, and I, my address is 1743 Fairchild, Manhattan, Kansas. Um, to your question about how somebody, first, we have a waitlist, and our waitlist consists of, and there's two agencies in this jurisdiction, and that are considered housing choice voucher, um, program managers, and that's us, the Manhattan Housing Authority, and then the North Central Area Agency on Aging. And they serve 17 counties or X number of counties, um, so they, they go beyond our jurisdiction. But just the Manhattan Housing Authority, we have a waitlist of 994 as of last time I checked, um, today, uh, for housing choice vouchers, and then if somebody gets to the top of that list, they're contacted by us, they're given, they're, we go through and make sure that they're still income eligible, they go through different screening, and then they're all, given a voucher to go out and look in the community for a, a house. And right now, we have 222 vouchers that are currently being utilized, and we have 35 that are out there looking. Um, we've been issuing as much as we can, as, as within our budget authority, and we're at about 99% of our budget authority, but we have 35 families out there looking for a home in Manhattan, and they're struggling to find one. Um, and so we're extending beyond, we, they often will ask for an extension because they're given 60 days to utilize that voucher, and we, we grant those extensions for 30 days or 60 days more, but it's not creating more housing inventory, it's not really solving the issue so much, but does that help?
Yeah, I mean, I just. Um, I was just kind of wanting to, for, for everyone involved, just to walk through the whole process of, um, just, so from what I understand, once it's their turn, they get the voucher, and then they can go, if they have a spot, they could sign a lease that day, is that?
They, they would go through, um, doing a, a request for tenancy approval, and that would begin a, a negotiation between the Housing Authority, the tenant, and the landlord to get our documents in order, so we could pay the landlord directly their portion of the rental assistance, and then the tenant gets, uh, their, their documents in order of their utilities. But yeah, it would happen fairly quickly, more like 14 days is probably a good turnaround by the time they identify a place, but, because there is an inspection required, um, that inspection isn't that thorough in, in regards to it meets code and it's for health and stand, health and safety standards. We can usually get that done within a few days of the, um, RFTA, that request for tenancy approval, but there's a few things that have to happen. It, it's not going to be in 24 hours.
Right. Um, what if, what if they can't find a place in 60 days or even within, whenever you extend?
Yeah, we're, we're, um, kind of bumping up against that, and, uh, that's a challenge, that's a challenge. We can continue to extend. Often, they'll end up being in life circumstances that take them out of our jurisdiction, and they'll move to a different place, or they'll, we won't hear from them for long periods of time, and, uh, that could be they're homeless, or, or they found something, they found a different path forward.
Sure. Okay.
Erin, can they rejoin that list of, what did you say, 994? So if they've not used the voucher within, uh, 60 to 120 days?
We don't remove them from the list. Yeah, they, they have an option to stay on the list. Um, the, right now, we're closed, we're not accepting new applicants, so as we work through those, those like 35 that are out searching now, um, we're not going to remove them from the list if they don't have success.
Erin, I know when you guys were, when Kelm was working on this, there was a list of how many, I'm sorry, how many locations in town accept the voucher? I don't remember the numbers.
Yeah, Kelm, do you want?
Surprise, Kelm, come on up.
Introduce yourself, please.
Introduce myself, and do you want my address as well?
Okay.
Uh, my name's Kelm Lear, I live at 1306 Yuma Street, and I worked as an intern at the Manhattan Housing Authority this past summer. Um, I did a survey among landlords and property management companies in Manhattan as part of my research for the article series that I think you're all familiar with, and what I found was among the, um, 30, approximately 30 landlords and property management companies that I contacted, they represented about 5,000 of the 14,000 rental units in Manhattan, and of those, approximately 76% off the top of my head are not available to people who use like a housing choice voucher.
Kelm, can you just repeat those numbers, please?
Uh, yes, so approximately 30 landlords and property management companies were contacted. Um, they represent 5,000 of the 14,000 rental units in Manhattan. Those numbers are from the United States Census Bureau, uh, Community Survey, and of those 5,000 units surveyed, approximately 76%, so a little over 3,000 are not rentable to people who utilize, um, public assistance, like a housing choice voucher.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Okay. All right. Anything for me?
Thanks, Erin. Thanks, Kelm.
Do you want to open up a public comment at this point?
Would you prefer to do that before the Commissioners have a chance to speak? All right, so we will open a public comment. Again, as you approach the, uh, microphone, please sign in and tell us your address or your affiliation.
Hello, I'm Nicole Mallot, I signed in earlier. My address is now 1425 Flint Hills Place. I am the young lady who writes in the letters to the Commissioners about the housing. I am subject to income discrimination. What we fall into is you have landlords who are unaware of what the voucher program is. So then you have landlords that say, "Yeah, I'll take it," and "Yeah, I won't." I've lived here since 2003 from Chicago, Illinois, and I've never had this problem until maybe, hmm, I ran into it in 2016 when I had my daughter, and now I've run into it again. So the problem we're having is this. You have area agency, which I'm with, you have Manhattan Housing Authority, who is strictly based for Manhattan area. You have public housing through them, and then you have Section 8 through them. Well, they don't have much public housing, because when you get in public housing, you're not going to move, because you're scared, right? So even if your Section 8 number comes up, you're thinking, "I can move out of here, and maybe let another family move in on housing, I can go and get a house," and that's not the case. Like, they say they give you 60 days to find a place, right? That 60 days come and go, that 30 days come, you are homeless. Whether it's Ari on Asian, whether it's Manhattan Housing Authority, I looked in Junction City, Lawrence, Salina, Wamigo, I almost had to move out of the state of Kansas. I then found Manhattan Area Partnership, to which I had to fight with these people, because they thought something was on my background, or they thought I had like a criminal eviction, and I fought with them. And when you do get your voucher, do you know what you're subject to? Slumlords. You have to live in mold, ceilings, leaking floors, rats, oh, and they want their money. And the moment you don't get them their money, you lose your voucher, but the moment you ask them to fix something, you got to call cold services. In saying this, I think I've been the most stressed out in my life mentally, physically, and emotionally. Living in Manhattan, I feel like I'm being pushed out, because there is nowhere here to live. Manhattan Housing Authority has, I don't know how to really say it without saying it wrong, but they're full of Pakistan people in the Manhattan area, over in Flint Hills, right? So that's a whole different kind of packaging that they took for people that are refugees, right? But people that's lived here and has been on a waiting list probably way longer than those people would never get that spot, because you took a package for, to save some people, right? Where do we go, that we've been here all whole life? I raised two boys here, put them through college for football. I have an eight-year-old daughter, who I almost said, "Baby, we finna go live in the truck of the car," because I ran into 200 landlords in Manhattan that told me, "Hi, my name is Nicole Mallot, I was wondering if you would like to accept my Section 8 voucher?" "No." "Click." "Why? Because I don't have to." "Click." "Do you think that's income discrimination? So what? Click." And there's nobody to back you. It's just, get it, deal with it, find a slumlord, deal what you can deal with, and call it what you want. The apartment in my right now falls off everything. They come fix myself, because they said, "I'm gonna call the City Commissioners on there, because I had to deal with them moving into that place." I moved two times in one year, dealing with two landlords. One landlord owns half of Stack Hill, and that lady does not care, she just wants her money. And the moment you call to get your things fixed, you're in trouble with your housing, then it's, "Oh, you have this many days to move." You can't. There is no, and I mean, there is nowhere to live. You lose your voucher. The programs are closed down right now, because nobody, and it's not just Manhattan, because you can't move to Junction, really. You can't move to Salina, really. You can't Ogden? Ogden? I got told no about Ogden. Kansas, Wamigo, off Green Valley Road, it's just no. No explanation. No, I don't care. And then there's a few good landlords who just don't know about the program. They don't know at all about the program. I was lucky enough to be with my boys and raise them, and find landlords where I can say, "Hey, can I just talk you into this situation? Let me explain this to you." Because we're like normal people, and we have to follow the law to the T about your property, and it's just lack of knowledge. Because I tell you the truth, a K-State student, I took out a house fast in a personal Section 8, because we have nowhere to go, not to put them out like that. But they're going to graduate school, go on next year, come back, get another apartment. Nothing around here but Airbnbs, places to eat, nothing to do with your children, it's just a money thing, but there is no one here protecting us. There is no laws here protecting us. And you could call them, as I promise you, I think I've cried the most I've ever cried, and I'm in an apartment right now, and they said, "Nicole, you need to be grateful. You need to be grateful you got somewhere to stay." And I'm very grateful that I did find a place to stay, but that come with a whole lot of nothing. Come with a whole lot of nothing, and I, I'm grateful, but if there's nothing to protect the people, how do the people stay? Where do we go? Because there's no shelters for us to go, once you tell us no. Cause there's no shelters for us to go once you tell us no.
Nicole, I don't wanna tell you no, but-
I heard a beep, but-
Thank you for sharing your story with us. Would anyone else care to make some remarks?
Hello, Josh Brewer, Executive Director, Manhattan, Habitat for Humanity of the Northern Flint Hills, I live at four ten Fremont Street. Um, just wanna, uh, thank Nicole for telling that story. Unfortunately, that's a story we hear, um, with some frequency. That's not an uncommon story in our community, doesn't give me pride to say that, but, um, I for one, I'm tired of hearing it, especially when we can do something about it. And our agency, we do not discriminate based on source of income. We will recognize someone's HCV voucher, we will recognize their HUD VASH voucher that they earned through their military service, we will recognize their military disability, we'll recognize someone's int- uh, retirement. It is income, it's entitlement income or it's earned entitlement income, but it is income. And I understand that there are significant hurdles to the enforcement side. And I would be curious to see if there is another agency in the community that could provide the city support in that enforcement. Um, one correction on the presentation, HCCI no longer has a office here in Manhattan. Um, so we are without those services. A lot of that falls on us and our team and this is outside of our scope. So our community does need additional resources. I don't think from the property owners and property management companies that, that we work with, I don't think they are opposed to this entirely, I think they wanna do it in a way that's not cumbersome and doesn't make their job harder. But I think for those people in our community that are ethical, I think there's a recognition that we don't wanna be a community that discriminates and we don't wanna continue hearing these sort of stories. Thank you. I'll sign it.
Thank you, Josh. Are there additional comments from the public? I-
Oh, Gary Oles, thirty-three oh eight Frontier Circle, I'll fill that out afterwards. First off, I wanna give you full disclosure, I have no rentals here. Uh, I should say I have one, but I manage that for a friend and it's college students, close to campus. I would encourage you to be very careful as you gather information. Don't take anecdotal evidence. Uh, cause as you recall, back in the day when another commission sat here, one of the commissioners had terrible photos of a condition of a property as you were pushing rental inspections. Of course, you can cherry pick and pick terrible properties. So be careful when you take people's experiences as an individual. Try to get a, like he said, try to get a broad perspective of, of everyone's experience and why. Some of the things that she said, based on my experience, are pretty inconsistent. In terms of retaliation, that's protected under Hun Law, she needs to know her rights. Okay, um, not just you, anybody needs to know their rights, which is one of the big problems in housing is tenants don't know their rights. And if they do know their rights, um, they don't necessarily wanna pursue it because they don't want the stress or they don't want the situation. I, I, I just wanna caution you because you don't, you don't really need to go down this road. He gave you the statistics on the number of vouchers that are in use and I think it was thirty-five that are searching. And did you catch the percentage of funding? Even though there's nine hundred on the list, thirty-five are looking and they're nearly tapped out. So ask the question, when are you gonna get more funding? The answer is, maybe, so what's the point? So be careful as you examine this because you've got to ask really good specific questions like you started to. Inquire is so, so you have an understanding, realize the cumbersome issues regarding being a section eight landlord in terms of paperwork, in terms of requirement, in terms of inspection. I can only give you one anecdotal experience. Years ago, I had one section eight tenant in a basement, okay? They came in and did a HQ, whatever it's called, inspection and everything was good to go. Rented to the person, don't even remember who it was. And the year came around for the next inspection and they said, hey, you only got one furnace in this building, uh, yeah, yeah, we only had one furnace last year. Oh, you're gonna have to put in a second furnace, nope. So we're off the program. Now that's an old, old story, we're talking like fifteen, twenty years.
Anecdotal.
Definitely anecdotal. But try to get as much data as you possibly can on what the real issue is. Also be careful because the source of income is so broad, you mentioned SSI. I have tenants, I have prospective tenants who come to me and they're on a limited income with SSI or SSDI, I don't know which it is. Yeah, I get eight hundred and fifty dollars a month, well, my apartment's five hundred. You got a hundred and fifty dollars to live on in a month and I'm supposed to ta- or I may be required to take you and you got a hundred and fifty dollars to live on and you got a car payment and maybe you got gas and you got food and whatever the case may be. So that broad category of source of income can really be painful. Now, Erin would say, well, there's other ways that you can disqualify them, you know, like no landlord reference. Well, is that gonna be allowed in the long run? Or will that go away too, where a landlord has to take them even if they got a bad reference or if they've got an eviction? Once again, I, I don't have a dog in this hunt, but I just want you to keep it in mind on a broad, broad sense because it's a serious issue and I'll take your mind back to when rental inspections came here. And those of you who've been around long enough, you know what happened. The landlords of Manhattan said, yeah, we're not gonna fight this in court. We'll just wait for the next election. What was the first action that took place? The first action that took place that got repealed? So, yeah, it's political and yeah, it's challenging. But as you pursue this, which I think you will, give as much data as you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Additional comments from anyone?
Hello, uh, my name's Thomas Weeks, I live at eleven five-two-zero Kurtner Lane in St. George, Kansas. I've been in the area since I gradu- or since I came to K-State in, I don't know, two thousand and twelve. And since I've graduated, I have been managing property and I actually have some property of my own. I think that the commission is going to pursue this, I think it's important to collect as much information as possible. I think there is a lot of misinformation or misunderstanding about housing choice vouchers and how they work. And I think that we would be better served educating landlords or property managers than trying to just immediately legislate this into action. So I, I would like to see a lot of resources go into that. Something that I learned is that folks who are on these sorts of programs, if they damage a property, they can get a lifetime ban. That was not the case twenty years ago, people can get kicked off, they are very scared. I have a tenant who gets twenty-seven dollars a month and she's always calling me, hey, you got my payment, right? Because I, I don't wanna lose this. So it's a big deal, it really matters. But on the flip side, I think it's because people don't understand the programs and how they work and how they can be beneficial. I think most landlords or property managers are typically scared of, well, what happens when they damage my property? How do I get, how do I get recourse, right? College students can damage property, people from the military, anybody, any of these classes can damage property, but it's this, that's what we're trying to evaluate is can the people pay, like Gary said, right? Do they have enough? But you can't just go to a bank and be like, hey, give me money and they don't try to do any kind of investigation. And that's kind of what a property manager does, they're protecting this really expensive asset. At the same time, we have a housing problem. I serve on the board for Habitat. I see and talk with our team all the time, we have a housing problem, we do not have enough housing. Habitat has a solution for housing that we can invest more money into. I, I, I saw in the presentation that there is legal fees and paying to have all of this stuff managed in our city. We've been talking about the budget and that's challenging, right? But I think we can spend some time educating people. Also, do we have an occupancy availability? Do we have enough rental property even available? I don't think from the other property managers I know that there's just a bunch of vacant housing and they're all empty and we're just saying, hey, sorry, you can't live here, right? Like we have more people than we have housing and so that's another problem to try to solve is where can we put in more housing to allow for more people? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Thomas. Anyone else?
Jessica Winters, four zero eight Houston Street. Normally I, uh, come with fully prepared comments and I am normally against most of what this city is currently trying to accomplish behind the scenes, however, um, I think Gary gave us a great example of why this, this needs to exist. I've struggled with housing ever since I was ten years old. Thirty-six percent of five thousand units aren't actively, I mean, let's be honest, being racist towards our community. That's, that's pathetic. The city should, should actively be pursuing this and should actively be pursuing enforcing this because you're gonna end up on the wrong side of history in this, let's put it that way.
Thank you, Jessica.
Hi guys, thank you for having me today, um, my name is Emily Herbig, I am the homeowner services manager with-
I'm sorry, you spoke a little quickly.
I'm sorry.
Can you tell us your name again?
Yeah, um, Emily Herbig, I'm the homeowner services manager with Habitat for Humanity of the Northern Flint Hills. Um, I actually didn't come to speak on this topic today.
Emily, can you give us your address?
Yes, I'm sorry, it's, um, five fourteen Pillsbury Drive, this is my first time, so-
That's right, just take a breath and-
But I have the incredible opportunity of working with the people in our programs for Habitat for Humanity, so both our homeownership program and our home repair program. I came today to talk about our home repair program, but when we were talking about the issue with section eight and the housing discrimination, I hear it from all angles, so I hear time and time again Nicole's story. And I get it from our home repair program too and I've seen, you know, people will apply for a program, they'll send in pictures of the conditions of their home. Actually, I'll get calls from home repair clients, um, who are just like, hey, I need a new roof, my roof is caving in on me, but my renter won't fix it, they told me that I need to shell out fourteen thousand dollars of my own money to fix this, do you have a program that can help me? But we don't help, I mean, we, we are more geared toward homeowners, but, um, I hear that story over and over again, um, when it comes to the homeowner side of things and it's incredibly sad, that I'm hearing the story over and over again and there's not much to do to help people, so. Um, I'll definitely be back to talk about the other thing, but I wanted to highlight that.
Emily, did you sign in?
Did you sign in?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber Starling, four zero eight Houston Street. It was nauseating to hear Gary advocate for forcing homelessness onto his neighbors. It shocked me to see him clutch his pearls and ask, oh, but who will think of the landlords? Who will think of the landlords you do? You bulldozed modest homes to build them all, you subsidized developers like Frontier, you enable short-term rental owners to deprive us of affordable housing, but you failed to protect these tenants. Can we call this bipartisan, is this bipartisan, what are we doing here? Do you guys just all mutually agree on screwing over the least of these? I, I thought you were Christians and here we are. I think that listening to Gary is a very interesting microcosm of how you can't educate prejudice out of a person. He had one experience a long time ago and he is using that and milk as a motive to hate her. The funding is depleted because there is hardly any funding. At the city level, fifty-eight percent of our taxes are going to RCPD. At the national level, fifty percent of our taxes go straight to the military and bomb manufacturers. That's why they're using up all the money, it's because it's not there. Pull yourselves together.
Amber, will you sign in, please? Excuse me. And by the way, just for the record, I am not a Christian, that doesn't, uh, complicate my morals and how I view this. Anybody else who wants to speak?
Do I need to reintroduce myself for the record? Okay. Um, I have some notes just in listening to other people come up here and speak tonight. Um, with regard to education, that is certainly important, as you saw, Lawrence certainly invested in that, um, to make landlords more aware and more informed about, um, something like the housing choice voucher program. Um, but there is, uh, a broad understanding of what the housing choice voucher program is in Manhattan. Again, I called approximately thirty landlords and property management companies for my survey and all but two of them had zero familiarity with the program. So they know what it is and yet an overwhelming majority of them, um, still said that they reject people with housing choice vouchers as tenants.
I'm sorry Kel'm, I think you misspoke, you were saying they don't know what the program is, but they-
Two of them, of the approximately thirty that I called, don't know what the program is. So what I'm saying is there is a broad understanding in the community of what the program is. Um, as, but again, education should still be part of this ordinance if we go forward with it. And when it comes to affordability, or excuse me, when it comes to, um, HCV utilization rates and how we can get more people off the waiting list, um, in Lawrence, they have an, they had a ninety-five percent utilization rate of their, of their vouchers, um, the Lawrence Housing Authority. And then when the city banned source of income discrimination, it jumped to ninety-nine percent. And when that happens, you have more people, a, that happens because they had people, um, in search of housing who were finally able to find it and come off of that list, so then they were able to help more people on the waiting list. And when the HCV utilization rate goes up, they become more competitive for more HUD funding for, um, additional housing choice vouchers for more people on the waiting list. And then, uh, Commissioner Opel brought up early on in your initial question about process, um, I want to highlight that HCV tenants are subjected to the same background check process that any non-publicly assisted renters have to go through. Um, so they can be rejected for other things like a poor credit score or a criminal background. Um, so with this ordinance, all we're asking is that source of income be taken out of consideration as a reason to reject someone because it is a legal, a legal means of affording housing. Um, and then if I may, I have some prepared remarks that I like to go through. Um, I, I believe all of you have read the article series that I wrote over the summer, so I don't want to reintroduce information you already know, but I would like to offer three, uh, new points for consideration. Um, as you've already heard and you'll continue to hear, many landlords have had bad experiences with tenants who use public assistance, like a housing choice voucher to afford housing. And I am sorry and I don't want to dismiss those experiences, I am te- I do feel, uh, sorry that those things have happened to them. But as I reported in the articles, publicly assisted tenants are not more likely to be bad tenants than non-publicly assisted renters. However, they are more likely to be stereotyped because they are distinguished by the fact that they use public assistance. So it's important to remember this fact when we hear derogative- So, it's important to remember this fact when we hear derogative generalizations. Second, from an economic lens, allowing source-of-income discrimination limits the ability of publicly assisted renters to fully and freely participate in the rental market. As basic economics teaches us, limiting market choices means consumers will be met with poorer quality options for potentially higher prices. And as too often occurs, and again, I reported this, when source-of-income discrimination is allowed, publicly assisted renters often get cornered into overpriced slums that can threaten the well-being of the household. My third and final point is really a question I'd like to pose to all of you, which is, what kind of community do we want Manhattan to be? If we continue with the status quo, the message we're sending is that Manhattan is unwelcoming to working families who need just a little help to get by and to become self-sufficient, which is the aim of a program like Housing Choice Vouchers. So, and I know from conversations with all of you during my internship at the Housing Authority that that's not the type of city you want Manhattan to be. So, thank you for your time and consideration. I hope that this body will amend the city's nondiscrimination ordinance in Chapter 10 of the City Code to include source-of-income.
Thank you, Calm.
Just briefly wanted to add that we're, the voucher program is at 99% of our budget authority, but the way that we get more vouchers is by being good stewards of that and continuing to issue vouchers. So, we get more funding next, the following year, and it's on a six-month rotation. We've actually requested 30 more HUD-VAS vouchers, and everything that I see coming through HUD is really targeted towards specialized vouchers and working towards homeless populations or veterans populations and elderly or disabled. So, the voucher system is really something that I think will be around for the long haul as it's greatly invested in by the federal government.
Thank you for that clarification, Erin.
Speak out of this one here.
Doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter, whichever one I go to. My name is Dave Darling. I live at 3119 Ella Lane in Manhattan, Kansas. I don't really like speaking at these things, to be honest with you, but you get Gary up here with one house, and all of a sudden, you know, it's like showing the one picture. I do appreciate some of his comments, but maybe to put it a little bit broader, the company that I own and operate manages, we're getting closer to 1,000 homes in Manhattan. We take care of 2,000 residents, cosigners, owners of properties throughout Manhattan. I have a rental, my personal, because I don't think you'll make anybody happy in the room, depending on what side of the room you get on here. One of my personal rentals has had a housing voucher for eight, nine, 10 years now, and it's been a reasonable experience. It's been a financially painful one when water's coming into the house and it hasn't reached the bedroom, so I didn't care to report it, or the person had medical issues that I'm not prepared to handle. It is my personal text on my personal cell still for that person because she needs that much attention on a regular basis. It is not the average renter that we're dealing with. I also find that a lot of comments are like, college kids will do more damage than a Section 8 voucher person or voucher person in general. We have the protection of cosigners in a lot of those properties as well. One of the problems with this particular problem is, is when there is a fee, let's say a garbage disposal goes down or a toilet gets clogged, plumber goes out and says it's tenant negligence, they should be charged for that. If someone's on fixed income, who pays for that? Right? In my experience with the Section 8 housing voucher residents that we've had, a lot of them have good intentions. We've also had the highest crime, highest damages, and highest issues with those particular properties. Without confidence, again, with the number and my engagement in this particular industry, I can assure you, there is no bigger fear than having that resident in our property. It requires so much more effort. Our maintenance team is there to regularly take care of the property because they already have their hands full in a lot of cases. The damages, I can assure you, just in one property, just in the last year, was over $20,000 in damage. The doors were kicked in, guns were drawn, police arrived, and the resident was kicked off the voucher program. I said, okay, no problem. Take that person out of the house for me, we'll move on to the next person, no problem. Oh, we don't do that. We just take them off the voucher program. Oh, and so I have to evict them. Okay, so how much is that going to cost? $4,500 to go to court, have the person removed, because once they were off the voucher program, they did not leave the property kindly, nicely. I'm only going to have two minutes left, so I want to bring up a bunch of questions for you to propose, okay? We have open emails to the housing companies, no responses. If you're going to have housing vouchers, I need support from these agents to provide back to our staff when we have questions about contracts and about things at the house. The last report we got from an inspection was that the house was cluttered with multiple items in the house. Not my responsibility. I don't know how that's my fault as a property management company to investigate that. There were actually 26 violations from the resident, two from us as a maintenance team, a drippy water heater and a window that wouldn't seal properly. We fixed both of those right away, took six trips, maybe five trips, I don't want to exaggerate it, just to get into the property, because she doesn't have a phone. We have to knock on the door, then if she's not there, we get charged from the vendor to go there. Then we leave a letter and say, please contact us with the day and time that will work for you. Then we came and fixed the two things. You know what they did about the other 25 violations? Nothing. I have no idea what is on that list that they're going to come in and inspect because it's just kind of a list. And that's how it is when they come. One minute. There are 25 houses on Zillow right now available in Manhattan with three or more bedrooms. I don't know what you're solving. There is no problem on our side for housing as landlords. I don't understand the laughing. I politely said that I've had someone in my house for a long time on a housing voucher.
Sir, please address us.
Yeah.
And members of the public-
This is essentially what we deal with on a regular basis with this, and I can assure you, if you'd like to speak more on the matter, I'd be happy to do that, but I have no further comment now.
Thank you, Dave, and I will remind the public that we do have protocol to follow here.
There's plenty that got left on the table now.
Dave-
Just the people speaking.
Nicole, please.
I'm going to ask you to have a second, because y'all said I only get one round. I thought they got a couple rounds.
The only, we asked them to make comments to the commissioner in their official capacities to provide us information.
I've been in that room for about 20-plus years, and y'all don't know what happened to us. You got deep people saying what you're talking about, because people want to say that.
Are there any other comments from the public? All right, seeing none, we will close. Public comment, commissioners, what would you like to discuss?
I'll go first. You know, I appreciate, Calm, those articles that you wrote. I think that did highlight, for me, highlight some things. I think through this, Katie, I appreciate all the work you did on it, and it's not a straightforward issue. For me personally, I do have concerns with, the way I'd say it, is mandating additional oversight for landlords. I think of that as, you know, that is their business and they shouldn't be forced into having additional oversight. So, I don't have an issue with necessarily the thought of the source of the income, it's that the other control factors that are attached to it and the other layers of oversight that are attached to the use of those funds. So, I understand that's not a popular opinion in the room, but that's where I'm at, is I'm concerned about in, if we're moving forward, that and the additional work that would be required on the city in order to set that up. That's one thing, I think we could discuss that and work through that in some way. I appreciated Thomas's comments. Education, I think, helping tenants understand their legal rights, but right now, do have some concern about mandating additional oversight for landlords.
Okay. This is, I've talked and read a lot about this. I think among ourselves, I think we should ask ourselves, what is the goal in this? And to me, the goal is to increase voucher usage, right? Increase the number of properties that are available to people on vouchers. So, when we look at things like enforcement, right now, essentially, we would be telling the landlords that it would cost them $500 to be able to discriminate against people because that is our enforcement mechanism, is a $500 fine. And it will, would take significant time and resources to establish some type of other enforcement mechanism like they have in Lawrence. And, you know, so it would take time, and simply doing a legislation right now isn't going to produce more housing. And again, it's not particularly enforceable at this point. That being said, I think it's important that we acknowledge that there is always and has always been a conflict between landlords and tenants, but we are talking about inconvenience to the landlords for having some extra paperwork that may or may not be overly burdensome versus the inconvenience of a person who cannot find somewhere to live. One of those weighs more than the other in my mind. So, I believe we should do what we can and what will be most effective. So, the real question is what will be most effective, and is maybe there a carrot that we can develop to incentivize the use of these vouchers instead of the stick and legislating And that may be just a first step that might not work, but it's at least, I think, something that we can have more impact in the short term until maybe some, a, an enforcement mechanism can be in, you know, we can develop some type of enforcement mechanism. Katie, do you know what the cost, the legal cost to Lawrence has been?
Your new city manager asked me the same thing. I asked Lawrence, they didn't, the attorney I spoke to didn't know offhand. I don't know if, we have their budget, it's hard to discern from it what portion of it would go to this, so we'd have to inquire further.
Okay.
So, I apologize, we don't have that number now.
Okay. Yeah, that's definitely something that we would need to develop as well, is like, what would a budget look like for something to enforce? Yeah, that's pretty much all I got at this point.
Well, obviously, we have a need, and obviously, we have the rights of people on both sides to consider. I think we have to be rather pragmatic sadly in that, quite frankly, we can pass discrimination things, we have absolutely no teeth to put in them. We only enforce discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity, which was something I pushed through as mayor. But even that, should we have that happen, you know, we really don't have a way to enforce that or to follow up on it. Now, what can we do? Gary, I'm sorry, but I think we could do rental inspections first, it would help a whole lot, because then if people got vouchers, they know they wouldn't be living in a hole in a basement. There are some really, really awful housing in Manhattan, and I think the best thing we could do as a commission is to check on that. We really didn't even get rental inspection through, we just got rentals registered. And that was primarily because the police and, well, first of all, the students came to us about rental inspection and asked us about that. But the police and the fire have no idea what they're going into in an old house that's got somebody in the attic and maybe somebody in the basement, and, you know, they don't. So, the rental registration purely said that they had to pay some minimal thing, like $15 a year, and therefore, we would know that that's a rental, and we would know what's involved in the safety of the individuals within that. And, you know, I think we should go back and look at the problem from that direction rather than trying to pass a, what I think, quite frankly, is a feel-good idea that, you know, we're really helping people, but if there's no way to enforce it. And it will be interesting to see what men, what Lawrence does and to follow, you know, their lawsuits and other things. So, I think this is definitely a good discussion. I think we need to support all the people who are working to solve it. I know, as a member of the Manhattan Area Housing Partnership, we rent to Section 8, but we have to, because of the state tax credits and things like that, we do have to go through and see if they have been a felon and things like that, which then do not allow us to rent to those people. So, there's, you know, it's not, you know, our choice. So, you know, I'm sorry, but I just, I can't support this because I really think it's kind of a Timken Village.
Karen, would you support further engagement with community and-
Sure, absolutely.
I mean, I really want this to stay active.
Uh-huh. No, I, I mean, I think we should, I think we should explore-
Y'all arm choke. I'll never come back. I'm from Cabrini-Green, Chicago, Illinois, D projects. And y'all sitting there talking to slum lords like this who don't want to rent the tenants because they want to keep their house up to code. That's what y'all should do. Make these landlords bring their houses up to code, and then they won't be scared to rent to people like me because they want some fines for fixing a ragged ass house. You're working fast.
I think we should also approach looking at, you know, how we can make sure the housing we've got is decent.
Yeah.
I mean, we really have, I can tell you some horror stories.
Well, and that's, that's part of what-
This is part of a whole, you know, and we, we're talking about workforce housing.
Right.
We're talking about trying to facilitate low-income housing. This is all part of the thing, you know.
And that's-
It's just that, you know, we can tack on the housing thing at the end, but-
Yeah, but, so, when folks are able to have choice and actually move around, that kind of economically forces the landlords to keep their properties improved.
We kind of thought that would happen with the case state enrollment going down, but I haven't really seen that as much as we'd hoped. No, you're, I will, you know, I will say, I understand fully, from the landlord, property manager's point of view, there are a lot of hoops to jump through with Section 8.
Yeah.
And people have talked to me about, you know, renting to Section 8 and having the Section 8. People come in and say, for example, this was a house with a woman and a 10-year-old and a 12-year-old, and there was a half-bath in the basement, and they made them take it out, which, I mean, I don't know what they thought was going to happen down there, but, you know, so, I mean, they're just, they're, the landlords are in the business to make money and not to lose money. And so, we have to get them to buy in, so show them that we can make this a positive for them and, you know, get some people off that list.
Yeah, so, I tried to find- So I, I tried to find as much academic research as I could, and there is not a lot. What I did find says that people are 12% more likely to secure housing when a source of income discrimination is, is legislated or is outlawed. So 12% higher than the current, I think we're at about 33% based on, you know, recipients versus the, the waitlist. It's, it's not a big impact. It, it, it does show that we are trying. But are we just doing this to, to, like, like you said, is it, it's not going to have any teeth? Right now, it doesn't have any teeth. So how can we make it actually effective? And I think that's, that needs to be part of our discussion is how we can streamline the process, how we can make sure that there are, there is good support both for tenants and landlords. And I wish we had the resources that Kansas City, Missouri has, that we could have a, a tenant resources person who's, that's their full-time job. And that's just not something that we have right now. You know, maybe we could find funds somewhere else that we could do that. But that, that's what, part of what needs to be in this discussion. And I don't, I don't want to do this half-assed. If we're going to do it, let's, let's do it.
Well, and I think we could look to Lawrence and see, you know, I mean, to me, the fact that we have this prohibition of discrimination in housing and all that kind of thing. We're just saying we do. We don't really have any way to enforce any of that. And there isn't even at the state a support for some of these things. You know, let's, well, I think you're interested in housing and it's wonderful. And I think we need to move forward and, and look at all the various avenues we can, can try to increase. And, you know, I know we need housing at supposedly all levels, but it's really the low-income housing that we need. Nice, good, not safe, low-income housing.
Peter, I'd like to pursue your idea. As you said, what else can we do going forward? As we saw both at the examples of Kansas City, Lawrence had extensive stakeholder engagement, educational opportunities. This may sound a little woo-woo, but perhaps we can start with having some community discussions where we invite people to come here, not to a commission meeting, but to have an opportunity to hear from the area agency on aging, to hear from Manhattan Housing Authority, to hear from, I always confuse the two. What's your group's name?
Manhattan Area Housing Project. Habitat.
And, and hear from the landlords as well. My late husband invested in real estate. At one time, we had 10 rental properties, not as much as some of you. We have rented to students, we have rented to Section 8 holders. We've in, rented to individual families. The home that was worst was a pair of adults who owned businesses. And the woman, the wife was a hoarder. There were mice running through the whole property. We have had students who left their places immaculate. We have had students who have trashed half of the appliances. I've had a Section 8 tenant for close to 10 years in one of our properties. And I feel very badly because while my husband didn't mind being a landlord, I do not really care for that profession. Nothing personal. It's just not what I want to be doing. And I will be taking, selling that property soon. Will it go to someone who will keep it as a Section 8 property? I do not know. But if not, it may enter the market as a very affordable starter home for someone at, with modest income. My point being, we can't put all the blame on individuals who qualify for housing vouchers. We can't put all the blame on students. We can't put all the blame on other families who perhaps don't adhere to our same standards of cleanliness and neatness in their homes. But for the moment, my suggestion would be to continue a community conversation about this. It's unfortunate that some people in the room think we are laughing about this. This has been a topic of conversation for the last 10 months on this commission. This commission is unified in believing that we need to address affordable housing in Manhattan. This is one element of that package. We have charged the Community Development Department with putting together policies that we might use to incentivize this. We will be hearing from, those applications, I think, will be opening soon. We are not unkind people. And we do not want to see our neighbors living in challenging conditions. To go back to the, there are tenants of all ilk, there are landlords of all ilk. We know there are landlords who are willing to keep their properties in good condition. We also know that there are those who do all they can to not make repairs. And when they make those repairs, put the burden of those repairs on the tenants. We get it. Please do not think that we do not get it. So my suggestion would be to consider, to continue to have some discussions with city staff. Let's start having some conversations where we bring together landlords to understand the implications of some of the voucher programs, where we can hear from both sides. And again, give us some time to monitor Lawrence's situation as it moves through the court system. This is an opportunity, I know we don't like to always say we want to learn from Lawrence, but, you know, they are already, are in this game. Let's see how things proceed with them. Are we, can we concur with that? And is that adequate direction for the city?
Sounds good if we don't, if we win on Saturday.
No, that sounds great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners, for that feedback. Staff will proceed with putting together a plan to engage our community and continuing to do research on this topic.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I'd like to call a five-minute recess. It's seven, 17. Let's come back here in five minutes. Let us reconvene if everyone can take their seats. Commissioner McCullough, can you return to the dais, please? I love when the room empties out. You can see who was here for which topic. We will now resume our October 22 city commission meeting. And we were going to discuss Community Development Block Grant update and overview. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry.
Try it again. Good evening. Stephanie Peterson, Director of Community Development. With me here this evening is John Adam, our Assistant Director. When John and I took over the CDPG program in August, we kind of divided responsibilities. So there may be some questions that you have that I'll defer to John. I wanted to start with just the four points on the slide to make sure that we're all starting at the same, with the same foundation. We, the city received our entitlement status with Community Development Block Grant in 2010. That means that every year, we receive an allocation of CDPG directly from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, or HUD. And they use a rather complicated formula to distribute this. And we can talk a little bit more about what that entails in a little bit. There are several requirements that is, are required with CDPG. But one of those, that's really kind of a policy-setting document that the commission adopts and approves, is a consolidated plan. That is a five-year strategic plan that outlines how you wish for us to allocate the funding for the next five years. These are, they're not specific activities that are listed. These are more broader goals, certain metrics that you want the community to achieve and how we allocate that funding. The Annual Action Plan is the implementation tool for achieving the goals and the metrics that are identified in that consolidated plan. The other thing I wanted to note is that our program year, it looks like it runs on the state fiscal year, but that is deceiving. So July 1, the state started their 2025 fiscal year. July 1, we started our 2024 CDPG program year. So a couple of times, so it's always a year behind. A couple of times in the slide, you'll see that I referenced 2023. I know that seems like it was really far away. It wasn't. That program year just ended June 30. And John and I are still working on wrapping up some of the, the expenses and projects from that year. This was just to show over the last decade what our allocation of CDPG has looked like. We, that formula that I referenced, it has like three to five different factors that HUD uses. One of those is the age of our housing stock, I believe. And then maybe the percentage of our population that is considered low or moderate, moderate income, or LMI. You can see here that over the last decade, our, our trend line is, is going downward. The last two years, we've received about $550,000 in CDPG. This slide is a, is just an overview of what our 2023 budget was, what was outlined in our Annual Action Plan. As I mentioned, we're still closing out our 2023 grant. So we don't have those, those actual numbers. We should have them any day now. But this is to show you how HUD looks at the different projects and how we identify those. So Project 1, that is our grant administration. We are not allowed to use more than 20% of our annual allocation on grant admin. This is mostly, for 2023, this was mostly salary and benefits. It did include a little bit of John and I's time overseeing the program and signing documents. And there are a lot of documents to always sign. And then there is a, probably around $1,000 of that, which are, we have to publish notice in the paper, so it, it covers that ad. We do, if there's stapler to buy or something like that, but those are very minimal charges. Project 2, our Housing Rehab and Modernization. This is broken down into three different activities, if you will. So that first one, it says admin. That's how most people would identify it. HUD actually considers that program delivery. So even though we can have an individual hired, a city individual, to deliver housing rehab, they don't count towards that 20% cap because they're delivering the housing rehab program. So that number off to the side, that include that individual's salary and benefits. The housing, the housing rehabs, we had budgeted at $75,000. Not all of that, though, actually went into a home. There are soft costs that are associated with the housing rehab program. These are things, if we have to have an engineer come in and do some sort of structural assessment, if we have to do radon testing, lead testing, and then send off that lead test. We have, every single housing rehab that we do, we have to do an environmental review. That requires us to publish that review in the paper. And so that has an additional expense that goes with it. So not, and we'll go more into soft costs here in a little bit. I'll show you over the five years what we've spent. And then the MHA, the Manhattan Housing Authority Modernization Project, that was, the city hired a contractor to do radon and lead testing for, I think it was three of MHA's properties, to make sure that residents were living in safe conditions.
Excuse me.
So the HUD.
Excuse me.
Go ahead.
Stephanie, when you say three of their properties, do you mean three individual residences, or do you mean the properties as a block?
Yes.
So multiple residents?
Uh, it was Flint Hills Place, Bear, I don't know where Karen, Karen left. But there were, there were over a hundred units. Do you remember which properties we did the radon and lead testing? Flint Hills Place, Bear?
All, all the properties, all?
We didn't do Towers.
For lead.
Okay, did we? Okay. That was, that was earlier on before John and I got more involved with this.
Not if I didn't just want a clarification so that someone listening would not think we spent seven thousand dollars on three.
No, there were over, there were like a hundred and fifty-two beneficiaries of that. That's not households. That's just individuals.
So the, the housing rehab modernization, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, that's a subtotal.
Yes.
And then you broke it down after, okay.
Yes.
I was a little confused what the difference.
I can see, I'm sorry, yes. I can see how. So Project Three, Public Services, we typically call them social services is how they're known. We are limited in that no more than fifteen percent of our allocation can be spent on those. The way that we kind of differentiate between that is that we have a subrecipient agreement with an entity, and that entity is the one that's delivering that service directly to their clients. So the five that we funded for the last couple of years, I'll kind of run through who they are and what they do. Housing Credit Counseling, Inc., they do provide tenant landlord counseling as well as housing and credit counseling to Manhattan, Manhattan residents. Kansas Legal Service, they provide advice on civil legal matters for low and moderate income individuals, again, also in the Manhattan city limits. Manhattan Emergency Shelter, Inc., they have a homeless prevention program. So they are trying to prevent people from winding up in their shelter, and they will assist residents with past rent payments if that's the case, or if there's a utility bill that would maybe cause them to, to get kicked out or evicted from their current place. They'll help residents there. Ponty Mental Health, there's a couple of different programs that they do, but it's typically supporting their caseworkers. And in our two thousand and twenty-four program, part of the allocation is going towards utility bills for their sober living house. And then Sunflower Children's Collective, or CASA, we allocate funding for them to, for their caseworkers to support children who are victims of abuse and neglect. And then our last project that was identified in two thousand and twenty-three were Public Facilities and Infrastructure. The project that we had identified are some roadway improvements at Fifth and Leavenworth, right between the post office and the Manhattan Housing Authority Towers. That project was also extending a water line that MHA needs in order to sprinkle their building. That project has been delayed now a couple of years. It showed up in two thousand and twenty-two. It shows up in two thousand and twenty-three. We will not spend this hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. But we are targeting to hopefully move this project forward in two thousand and twenty-five. This is a project that we're partnering with the Flint Hills Area Transportation, Transportation Agency on. They're contributing quite a bit of money into that project, and then we're using our CDPG as match.
And Stephanie, you're able to carry that over from year to year?
Yeah.
Does that go against the five fifty, five hundred and fifty thousand that you've been getting in recent years?
No, that's a great question. So right now, we actually have nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars that we have not allocated. That is, that will be a problem come February. Nothing that HUD does is simple. So even their, their timeliness calculation is a little different, and I would have to go back to my notes to look, but basically you add up your last, I think, all the money that's, that you currently have, and then you divide it by your allocation, and it has to be a certain percentage. We'll have to spend, and, and we will get there, but we have to spend around a hundred thousand dollars before February. Again, I don't see that that's going to be an issue, but it is concerning that we continuously, and this has been historic, where we identify a public facilities project, and then it takes a while to design, and then to construct, and then to close it out. And so one of my recommendations at the very end is actually developing some sort of CIP, where we have shovel-ready projects that we can just put into the hopper to move these, these projects along.
So Stephanie, just to clarify, these are projects that the intent for them to be done was July, July one, two thousand and twenty-three through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Correct.
And so most of those, so one, two, and three has been spent, but we're finalizing out those details, and then we can roll over the one ninety.
Correct.
One, along with other funds.
Yeah, so that one ninety-one was actually two thousand and twenty-two funds originally. That's when we had identified it. So each year, we keep getting our allocation, even if we haven't spent our previous year's allocation.
Do we have to keep the spend consist, like, when we roll that money over, we have to keep that in that Project Four line for spending?
Yes. Uh.
Or?
No, not necessarily. So we could, that's where our annual plan, we could decide, you know what? We're not going to do a public facilities project, and so in our two thousand and twenty-five annual allocate, or annual plan, we could just not show a public facilities.
Okay. I'll stop asking questions and let you.
That's fine.
Your presentation.
Did I hear nine hundred and twelve thousand unallocated?
Cor- correct.
That's a lot.
That is a lot of money.
When, like, is, and I'm assuming that's, that's rolls, rolls on and off at separate, different intervals. That's not, we don't have to spend nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars by February, right?
No, we only have to spend a hundred thousand of that by February.
Is that all?
So the, uh, yes, I, I am also concerned with this. One of the reasons I think that we got in this position is because in two thousand and twenty-two, we identified two hundred thousand dollars we were going to put towards this project, and that project has been delayed due to design. And so we've just continued to roll it forward rather than looking for other opportunities to spend that funding. Again, that's where one of the recommendations that John and I will have is to come up with our own capital improvements program for CDPG. So if there is a delay, we can go to the next project and make sure that we're spending down our allocation.
Stephanie, is the one ninety-one match, is that ten percent of what ADABUS is putting up, or what?
Uh.
What's ADABUS bringing in?
I would have to go and look.
You don't know what percentage?
No, we, since we're still in design, the final cost of the construction hasn't been identified yet.
Okay.
Uh, we obviously have more than a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars that we can put towards that project, though. So what I showed, what I just showed you was looking at how HUD views things and how our budget is allocated. When I look at this, I look at it a different, a little bit differently, and so I've combined our admin together. That's our personnel expenses. That's our very low kind of office supplies. And then you can see the other categories as they were presented there. When, when I broke it down this way, what was originally concerning to me was that a majority of our allocation goes towards administration. And that isn't, I've been a public servant all of my life, and this isn't something that I feel like is the best use of taxpayer dollars. And so that's when John and I began to look into how could we reshape CDPG to reduce that administrative cost and to provide a, or deliver projects that are more impactful for the community as a whole. And so what you're seeing here, the historic is what I just showed. It's on the left. And then the proposed one here on the right, it, you notice that it's missing one of those projects that was in a previous slide, and that's housing rehab. I first want to say that it, this is not implying that housing rehab is not an important service that the city provides or an important aspect of our community. We, and I'll give you historic data of how this has impacted families and households here over the last fifteen years. It's to suggest that there might be a better way to deliver housing rehab that's more efficient and more effective for everybody involved. I pulled some, I'm a data person, so I pulled some numbers to give you a sense when I say effective and efficient. We have a hundred-step checklist that we use for every single housing rehab. We do have copies if anyone wants to see it, but we go through that checklist for every single project. That, those steps take a lot of time. So in two thousand and twenty-three, we did eight rehabs. The average delivery time from application to project completion was three hundred and nineteen days. In two thousand and twenty-two, we did five rehabs. The average delivery time, two hundred and sixteen days. I looked at both the, the lower end and the higher end. For two thousand and twenty-three, our lowest was a hundred and thirty-six days, and our highest was four hundred and seventy-eight days. The one that's four hundred and seventy-eight days, there were a lot of complications with that. One of them, one of the reasons, it was in a historic district. As soon as you spend federal dollars in a historic district, SHPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, gets to be involved. They have, they get to decide whether they like your design, whether your design, especially if it's on the exterior of the house, if your design complies with the historic district, and we went back and forth with them several, for several months because they didn't like the design on that project. I have more data. I won't bore you with that right now. But I think it speaks to that with any federal funds, there are a lot of regulations that come with it, and there's a lot of process. And if you don't follow those processes, you're in jeopardy of losing your funding.
Stephanie, that checklist, that one's required by, you said it's a hundred-step checklist. That's because we're taking the federal funds.
Correct, and that's a checklist that, my understanding is that our staff developed quite some time ago, but it goes through the entire process so that we don't accidentally miss a step.
Okay.
Um, let's see. So to speak to this proposed, how, moving forward, how we could allocate our CDPG funds, part of our investigation into coming up with this was looking at peer cities. Manhattan is unique in that we are one of the very few cities in Kansas that are between fifty and a hundred thousand in population. We are too big to go to the state to get some of our funding, but we're not big enough to get a federal allocation of, of certain dollars. So I, the, the communities that are our peers are in the KC metro area. Two of those communities no longer even accept their CDPG. They give it to Johnson County, and Johnson County administers it for them. They do that because of the oversight, of the administrative burden that it causes, and everything with CDPG is very cumbersome. Another community in the KC metro, they do still receive their CDPG funds, and their model looks very similar to what you see on the right-hand side of the screen. They do not do housing rehab. Again, they are in Johnson County, so Johnson County administers their housing rehab program for them. I asked their individual who oversees this why they didn't do it themselves, and it's the same thing. The amount of time that it takes, the regulations that are involved, you can, you start to hear the same stories. And lastly, I'll share that our HUD reps were in town a month ago to meet with John and I, and I was kind of foreshadowing with them this conversation this evening. And our, our, I was asking them what their experience had been with other communities, and they said that more and more communities are going away from using CDPG for housing rehab because of the, and this was a quote, "the unfunded mandates that come with it." There, that's where we started leaning more towards there has to be a better way to deliver this program that doesn't have all these requirements, that doesn't take us, on average, three hundred and nineteen days. If someone's roof is starting to leak, it shouldn't take us that long to go and address their, their issue immediately. So our, a little bit about our housing rehab program. We received Home Funds from nineteen ninety-nine through two thousand and nine through a competitive grant at the state. HOME stands for Home Investment Partnership Program. This is one of those funding sources that we are kind of in the middle on. We're too big to go to the state and get that allocation, but we're not a hundred thousand in population yet, so we don't get a, a direct allocation like Lawrence does, or a lot of the communities, Wichita, the KC metro. In two thousand and ten, when we became entitlement for CDPG, staff at that time just kind of rolled over what we had been doing with HOME and to CDPG, and then we added on a couple of, of public infrastructure projects every now and then. But over the course of fifteen years, we have been able to do a hundred and twenty-six rehabs. We spend about eight thousand dollars per rehab, and at, over that fifteen-year period, about ninety-three thousand dollars per year. I will note that it, that housing rehab is important in that we've identified, even in our housing market analysis, that maintaining our existing housing stock is one way to achieve attainability for some lower or moderate income individuals. Oftentimes, we think that new construction is going to get us lower-income housing or middle-range, in, middle-range housing. A lot of times, it's our existing housing stock that can actually serve that purpose. Uh, this looks at the last five years. We've done thirty-six total rehabs during that period, that time period. That averages out to about seven point two houses per year. You can see that this table is broken up into three different categories. We do three different types of housing rehabs. One is comprehensive. This is everything from doing new paint to fixing hardware or replacing a faucet, up to a new roof, replacing an HVAC system, stabilizing a foundation, really anything in between. There is a, a limit of twenty-five thousand dollars per project on, on those. For emergency and accessibility, those would be things, if there is a hole in the roof that we needed to go fix, if the furnace stopped working, or if there were any sort of mobility improvements that needed to be made to a home, it would fall under this category, and those are capped at eight thousand. And then mobile homes, those are capped at fifty-five hundred. For all three of these programs, we work only with owner-occupied units. I mentioned earlier, soft costs. Over the last five years, we've spent twenty-two thousand dollars in soft costs. Again, for, I think it was for the lead testing, if we have a company come in and do that, it's around six hundred to seven hundred dollars. So some of these costs can add up rather quickly. If we need an engineer to come in, we just did a, a foundation. If we have to have an engineer to come in to make sure that the structural integrity of the unit is still safe, that is an added expense. We don't add that to the homeowners. It doesn't deduct from their, let's say it's a comprehensive rehab, it doesn't deduct from their twenty-five thousand. We pay for that, that separately. And then looking at our admin costs, excuse me, over the last five years, and the number of housing rehabs we've done, we spend, on average, fifteen thousand dollars per rehab in administering that program. So, next steps. For the remainder of program year two thousand and twenty-four, which will take us up to June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five, community development staff would like the opportunity to continue to evaluate our CDPG program, to find efficiencies, to investigate what other opportunities are out there. In our consolidated plan, we have a project that's called Economic Development and Job Creation. There has never been an activity in an annual plan that addresses that goal. I can't even stand here and tell you what an eligible activity would be under that, but we need the time to go and look and bring you options to determine for your next consolidated plan what activities you would like us to move forward with. During that same time, I would ask that you allow staff time to brainstorm other funding sources for housing rehab. I pulled some statistics over the last five years of who we've served, I think, yes. Fifty-three percent of our clients are eighty percent area median income. If you recall, that's within our workforce housing range. We have a workforce housing sales tax that we could dedicate a portion of that funding to go towards improving or maintaining our existing housing stock. The, the repairs and the maintenance of existing homes, that is something that our Workforce Housing Steering Committee had identified. It wasn't part of what we had brought forward, but it certainly is something that could be considered. Just a couple other statistics. Forty-seven percent of our clients are elderly. That means they're sixty-two years or older. Thirty-two percent were disabled, and seventy-six percent are female head of household. We, looking at, at housing rehab, there is a, a community partner here in Manhattan. They're looking at how they can utilize impact investing. They have large donors, and they're wanting to know how can we make a difference in our community? How can we give back? And the return is not financial, but the return is making Manhattan a better place to, to live. I, there's further conversations there that we could have if that's a direction the Commission wants us to go. We also have other, other funding sources that we could look at. One of the communities that I referenced in the KC metro, when they got rid of their CDPG, they kept their housing rehab program, and they run it with general funds. I think it was around a hundred thousand dollars a year, and they can do so many more houses than what we can under our program because all of that red tape, it's not there. I think it was around a hundred thousand dollars a year, and they can do so many more houses than what we can under our program, because all of that red tape, it's not there. For, so that's kind of finishing out the rest of this year, at the same time, we need to start getting ready for two thousand and twenty-five. We are needing to develop our next consolidated plan. But I think this comes at a great kind of pivotal point in CDBG. To truly think more holistically about the program than what we've done in the past. Rather than continue to do the same thing that we've done for the last fifteen years. Are we able to explore other options to deliver services back to our community? And really take a look at all of the needs that our community has identified, and then start matching up the best funding source. Part of that update will include an update to our citizen participation plan. When HUD was here, they identified that there's some deficiencies within that plan, we will address those. But we also need to look and make sure that we're reaching to the the public where where they stand, rather than asking them to always come to us. And our long-range planners, they're really good at public participation, so I'm eager to hear what their ideas are. And so as we set our priorities for the next five years, that doesn't happen in a vacuum. We will do public engagement, we will reach out to see what the public thinks our needs are. We will certainly get your feedback as part of that process. There, as far as stakeholder involvement, we have already, our social services are well-connected and well-looped in. There's coalitions and there's groups that exist, in which all of those participate, so we will make sure that we get them involved. And then, I've said this a couple of times, but we really hope to develop kind of this CIP of how we want to utilize our CDBG funds for public facilities and infrastructure, so that we don't sit on nine hundred thousand dollars here by the end of next year. With that, I'm going to look quickly at John and see if there's anything he wanted to add, if not, we can go to questions that you all may have.
Stephanie, can you possibly hop on the website really quick? Last year in September, we adopted an ADA plan. That ADA plan called out roughly four hundred and seventy thousand dollars annually. We need to spend over the next ten years, it had it broken out. Yeah, I think if you just do backslash ADA. On, on the report, I think it's page forty-four. Yeah. And we can get this link to you and and get this website to you, obviously, this was delivered by Kim Lee Horn in September of two thousand and twenty-three. Page forty-four outlines kind of an annual. It's it's forty-four of the actual documents, probably not, yeah, a couple more there. So there, it starts to highlight what you need to spend over ten years and an annual budget. So we have about a four-point-six, four-point-seven million dollar bogey to try to realize here in the next twenty, twenty-five years. But the funding opportunities, it does call out CDBG as a major identified funding source for a lot of these things within the community, and I just wanted to highlight that, we'll get the report link out to you. But CDBG is clearly a very eligible and very worthwhile source of revenue to address some of these issues in our community.
Thank you, Stephanie. I just want to underscore, for someone who may have read your presentation and not heard you speak, that we're not looking to completely eliminate rehabilitation programs, we are looking for alternative sources of income. It's pretty shocking to see the figures that you have in here in terms of admin costs. Not that I don't want you to have staff, but to be paying someone ninety thousand to administer seventy thousand dollars worth of projects, it's not.
I will say that part of that is benefits, so it's not just a salary of ninety thousand, and we have decent benefits, okay.
Yeah, but my point is just, I want to reinforce to the people who are here tonight, and those who may be listening or watching, that our intent here is not to eliminate the city's engagement in housing rehabilitation. But to look for alternative sources of funding for that.
Stephanie, I'm just a little, I mean, can you just clarify for me? So, we have in the winter and spring of twenty-five, we're gonna adopt the plan that goes twenty-five, twenty-six, or the twenty?
So in, so the spring of two thousand and twenty-five, we'll be working on our consolidated plan, which will cover two thousand and twenty-five through two thousand and twenty-nine.
Okay. But for the remainder of twenty-four, which started July first, right? Are we not gonna spend any money, or what?
No, we will spend money. Like I mentioned, that public infrastructure project will not be ready, so we likely will not be spending that. We will continue to assist Manhattan Housing Authority if they have any sort of testing that needs to be done. John and I have been spending, again, did some data, John and I have been spending individually forty to sixty hours a month right now on CDBG to get us to this point. When I say that it is cumbersome, that is not, I'm not bluffing, like that is, it is a lot. Even if we spent zero dollars in a program year, there are still a lot of reports that we have to do. We have to report that we didn't spend money, and we have to report that we didn't do this. So there are, there are admin costs, no matter, no matter what. And we have been working for, since August, on wrapping up a couple of housing rehabs that were started in two thousand and twenty-three. And that we had a closeout, there were, I think, four or five that John worked on closing out.
So Stephanie, the part of the nine hundred and twelve thousand dollars, is that include the two thousand and twenty-four? The five hundred and fifty thousand that we have for
Yes.
two thousand and twenty-four through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-five?
So, yes, for a program year.
And that doesn't necessarily have the same project allocations as what, two thousand and twenty-three?
It does. We've done the same thing for the last, I'll say, five years. We have grant administration, housing rehab, modernization, public services, and public facilities and infrastructure. So two thousand and twenty-four, almost, it does mirror this, actually. That some of the numbers might be a little bit different, but we were planning to do the same exact projects. Oh, we will spend money because we have public services, so we'll still continue to do those in two thousand and twenty-four, they have their grant allocation. But we didn't get our two thousand and twenty-four funds, which started January, July one, until mid-September. So we haven't been able to spend any of our two thousand and twenty-four funds, because we didn't have a grant agreement with HUD.
But with some of the changes you've made administratively?
We don't have to do anything. So just like this public facilities project that we didn't do in two thousand and twenty-two, we're not doing in two thousand and twenty-three, we probably won't do in two thousand and twenty-four. We don't go back and change anything. If you don't spend the funding, you don't have to modify it. Now, if you said, we want you to take that hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars and do something else with it, then we'd have to go through, and you would have to amend our annual our annual plan to reflect that. But if we don't spend the funding, HUD doesn't make you go back and and change anything. Does that make sense, with this budget?
Yes, that makes sense.
So we're kind of gonna change our allocation in the middle of a, or, we're not.
No, so we do have budgeted for
Not our allocation, but like our
Our budget.
comprehensive plan.
Oh, no, so the comprehensive plan, it's identified all these things over the five years that we want you to, that you wanted us to work on. And as well as that economic development job creation that we haven't done anything with. We're not even changing our annual plan. We're just, what we'll end up doing is at the end of each program year, we have to do a annual report. And in that report, we say, this is what we spent, this is what we didn't, this is why we didn't spend it. But we don't have to go back and change any of these numbers, as long as we're not reallocating those dollars. So at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, what if we, if we, let's just assume, or, yeah, we'll assume that we're going through that proposed CDBG allocation, where housing rehab's funded out of another source. At the end of two thousand and twenty-four, our annual report would say, we had a public facilities and infrastructure project, it still was in design, so we weren't able to spend that funding. We also have identified another source of funding to do housing rehabilitation, so we did not use CDBG funds for that activity. And as long as we report that, that's all that HUD wants to see.
But then, can we use them in a different way, I'm sorry?
These, we can, at that point, we will have to go back, and what my recommendation would be, is that we add that funding to our public facilities. And we will have to do an amendment for that.
So, I, so, okay, so there won't be, I had a question about any consequences for, you know, like the the personnel changes and things like that, mid-cycle. This proposed change is really for the next cycle coming forward, okay?
Correct, and starting in two thousand and twenty-five, which would match with our new consolidated plan. And it would give you the opportunity, rather than to make a decision kind of year by year, you get to make a five-year decision on how that funding is spent.
Stephanie, so we've got nine hundred thousand?
Yes.
A hundred and ninety-one's going to the, the water?
Well, I would recommend at this point that we put quite a bit more money towards that project, but this is what was proposed in two thousand and twenty-three as part of our annual plan.
So do we have to get Department of Transportation, okay, to get the match, or?
We've already, we've been working with them.
Okay, but that's still, there's still a couple hundred thousand in there.
So this only reflects what our two thousand and twenty-three allocation was. Twenty twenty, we, so, in two thousand and twenty-two, I think we have like a hundred and twenty thousand left over. Twenty twenty-three, we have maybe two hundred and sixty thousand left over. And none of these are gonna add up to that nine-twelve, I realize that, but you gotta get a sense.
Yeah.
So what we'll do is, as soon as we have a public facility, facilities and infrastructure project, we'll use that two thousand and twenty-two funds, those two thousand and twenty-two funds first. Then we'll bill our two thousand and twenty-three. We'll keep getting each year's allocation on top of that, but this shouldn't become an issue, because we're gonna be identifying projects that are ready to backfill. And they're ready to go to move forward without this delay.
I thought when, we, we had initially planned to build the Douglas Center Gym with CDBG over four years. And they told us we couldn't do that, because
We ran into a cash basis law with the attorneys in New York on how we structured that. So we, we can't obligate future commissions, and we were gonna need to, in order to leverage that funding through HUD. So that, that deal, we ended up, obviously, doing the project, it's in general obligation bonds, but it doesn't have CDBG.
Yeah, I just wondered if we aren't obligating. I mean, we already have the money, so we're not really obligating it for next year, I didn't want to run into cash basis again.
No, you won't, and the way she's describing it, we're gonna create a CIP, and you're gonna start knocking off the list and spending the money. And you're gonna spend the twenty-two money first, then the twenty-three, then twenty-four.
Does most of the CIP have to go to ADA?
No, I just bring that up tonight, just because it's, it's out there, I mean, that analysis was done, it looked at our entire if, well, it looked at twenty-five percent of our infrastructure and made projections that we, we have over four million dollars worth of ADA improvements we need to make. And CDBG is like the top-listed revenue stream that we should look to, to help with some of those improvements in our community.
Could we pave the cemetery roads with that?
Probably not.
Everything needs an evaluation with CDBG and ADA. There's a long list of ADA, and there's clearly areas of our community where CDBG are more applicable than others.
So, on that, there are only specific types of public infrastructure, like, I think I, I watched a video on the HUD website last night about this. And you can't, it can't be part of a maintenance program, but it can build new infrastructure, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and so, I think my interpretation of this with the the housing rehab thing is that, like, the overhead administration cost for a project is kind of the same regardless of the scope of the project. So we were spending, we, if we had one five-hundred-thousand-dollar project, we would have the overhead for one project. But instead, we were doing ten five-thousand-dollar projects, and so then we had ten costs of overhead, is that?
Yes, that's exactly right.
And so our, our kind of goal here is to say, let's do more big projects that, or fewer projects that have a larger price tag.
Yes.
That way, we're able to use these funds more, is that?
Yes, so we have to do, I mentioned, we have to do an environmental review for every single housing rehab project. We also have to do an environmental review for our public facilities and infrastructure. That takes the same amount of time, no matter really what the project scope is. And we end up hiring, we'll end up hiring contractors to do some of the Davis Bacon reporting that's required. Like, there are some other steps with public facilities and infrastructure, but the overhead that's required from your, your community development staff is much less than that, each individual housing rehab.
Okay, do you wanna hear from public?
Thank you, Stephanie.
You're welcome.
We will now have the opportunity to hear from the public, is there anyone who would like to make a remark?
Do I need to introduce myself again?
All right. Just your name, I think.
Emily Herbig with Habitat for Humanity of the Northern Flint Hills. And one of the first things that I want to say is, I think it was mid-two thousand and twenty-three, where we got to partner with the city on the CDBG program for, for home rehabs. And one thing that I noticed right away is that there was a bit of a disconnect. A disconnect in what, how to get these programs, these, these programs across the line, and get these projects done for our homeowners. And what I mean about that disconnect is really keeping the homeowner at the center of our projects. And doing the paperwork and everything we need, the income verification, the construction piece, which we were able to offer a more cost-effective solution to. To package that all up and get it done. So, one project that sticks out to mind to me is five oh five Pierre. There was, that one did take a while for us to get across the line, but, and consistently with all of our projects. When we wanted a partnership with the city, I was taking on a majority of the income verification, the application processes, packaging those. And then passing it off to the city officials to then do the environmental review. And we were able to get those across the line within a month, a couple months, if there were no major issues. So when it comes to timeline, I'm not quite sure whether this connect is there. But one thing I do want to mention, on the construction side, is that we acted as a general contractor. So we would take, and we would, we would take it and do different quotes, if they needed a roof. We would self-reform a lot of the work with Cody and his staff and volunteers to keep the cost low with those construction projects, so we were doing a lot of this in-house, and more of the grant administrative stuff is the stuff that the city was doing. And mind you, they weren't paying me, Habitat pays me. One thing I do want to mention is there is a huge need for this, for the rehab program in town. I have ten, twenty applications right here, from when we started last year, of people that I cannot serve, because there's no solution in Manhattan to serve them. They're income qualified, they are people, they are your local nurses, they're your local veterans, they're your local schoolteachers, all people with housing issues, significant housing issues, some of them are gonna be ADA issues, so wheelchair ramps that I can't fund. And people are falling and passing away, because I can't fund these projects in our community. On top of that, I have another list here of about twenty people who have inquired about CDBG funds from, from our, from our agency, and I don't have a solution for them. So, that's what I have to say about this situation. I actually think that this is a, a housing issue that should be handled by professionals who know how to handle this issue, not the city. So, I'm gonna pass this on to our coworkers, to Kirk and Injackson, please, to take on.
Good evening, Kirk Crabtree, five fourteen Pillsbury Drive, let me sign in real quick. I'd like to go back a few slides, please. We used to play a game, our children played a game, and we played this game at KC State on the big board called Spot the Difference. Where you have two very similar pictures, and then you have to look at those two pictures side by side and see what the differences are. And I want you to look at these two pictures up here. And what's the difference between these two pictures? No housing rehab. And there's no housing rehab, because back in July or August, without explanation, without warning and without remorse, our city decided to pause housing rehab. Madam Mayor, you made the comment that our city, it is not the intent that we are giving up on housing rehab. But based on what we just saw, we're giving up on it until at least July of next year. Her folder's only gonna grow larger because we, we don't want to deal with it. We'd rather talk about it for the next year than help those people. That's what you all want to do, that's, that's the proposed recommendation. That's, that's the proposed recommendation. But that's not why I'm here to talk. Once again, my name is Kirk Crabtree. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight on a matter that is essential to the future of our community, the continued support of CDBG here in Manhattan, Kansas. While this grant funds many critical initiatives, I'd like to focus specifically on one aspect that is particularly vital to our city, housing rehabilitation. And even more importantly, I want to highlight how this impacts one of our most valued populations, our military veterans. As many of you know, Manhattan is home to a significant number of military veterans due to our close proximity to Fort Riley. These veterans are not only a proud part of our city's identity, but they also make up a large portion of our economic base. When they return from service, many choose to settle down here and build their lives here. For some, however, finding or maintaining affordable, safe, and accessible housing can be a significant challenge. That's where the CDBG Housing Rehab Program becomes a critical tool for our veterans. The housing rehab, the housing rehab programs funded through the CDBG allow us to address urgent housing needs for veterans who may be struggling to maintain their homes. Many veterans, particularly older or disabled veterans, live in homes that are in need of repairs or modifications to make them safe and livable. These repairs may include, may range from fixing leaky roofs and improving energy efficiency to making homes accessible for veterans with mobility challenges. Without these rehabilitation programs that we have now paused until at least July of next year, veterans often face the choice of living in deteriorating conditions or leaving the homes that they love. By investing in rehabilitation, we ensure that veterans can remain in their homes, giving them stability and preserving their dignity. Veterans returning to civilian life face unique challenges that can make housing stability difficult. Some veterans struggle with physical disabilities as a result of their service, while others may experience mental health issues such as PTSD that make it harder to adjust to civilian life. These challenges can sometimes lead to financial strain, making it difficult for veterans to keep up with home maintenance. The CDBG's housing rehab funds, which are now paused for the foreseeable future, could have provided veterans with the repairs and modifications they need to live safely and independently, whether it's installing ramps for their mobility issues, widening doorways for wheelchair access, or making energy-efficient improvements to reduce utility costs. These grants would have allowed veterans to live with dignity in homes that meet their needs. When we support housing rehabilitation for our veterans, we are doing more than fixing up individual homes. We are preventing displacement and homelessness. So for the next year, without housing rehab, we are going to have more displacement and more homelessness. Imagine a veteran who has lived in Manhattan for decades, raised their family here, and invested in their home, only to be forced out because they can't afford to make necessary repairs. Without the CDBG, many veterans, veterans could face this difficult situation. By keeping veterans in their homes, we are keeping families together, preserving the integrity of our neighborhoods, and strengthening our community overall. By continuing to support this program, we are not only investing in our veterans, we're investing in the future of Manhattan itself. Let's work together to keep this critical resource in place, ensuring that all our veterans, regardless of their circumstances, have a safe place to call home. Thank you.
Hey, Kirk, could you and Emily provide your residence address, please?
Sure.
No, he didn't.
Five, five, that's, that's the Habitat address.
322 15th Street in Ogden.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Emily, I believe you gave your office address as well.
She did the first time, I think.
Except for two people who flunked.
Hi. My name's Cody Rebholz. I live at 1518 Pierre Street. I am the construction manager for Habitat. Was there anything else I need to?
No.
Say? Okay. So. I have been the construction manager for Habitat for two and a half years now, and Josh has been the executive director since before then, and I know he has been trying to get the city to work with us on this housing rehab program since before I started. And for a while, I was showing up to the, the bid, I forget what you call it, but Sean would show up and for the walkthrough for contractors. And I was told that Habitat was not allowed to bid because it wouldn't be an apples-to-apples comparison if we're using volunteer labor to bring down the cost, which we eventually were able to work with Sean and Christina, where they would allow us to bid and that we were piloted the program. I think our first CDBG project started in January, and we've done, I want to say, at least four CDBG projects since then. And we actually had another one working through the process and we thought was about to be greenlit when we were told that CDBG is no longer funding housing rehabs. And so we are trying to find other funding for that project. And that is an accessibility modification, as well as some new flooring in the kitchen because it's, the linoleum is peeling up and that sort of thing. We work with a number of agencies to try to find funding for repairs outside of the city of Manhattan. We're able to use things like USDA funding, and there's an affordable housing program that we use. And a lot of that, we are piecing together whatever grant funding we can. And there are plenty of projects that we don't find funding for, and that is just a heartbreaking part of our jobs. I understand the administrative burden of this particular program, especially when Emily, as our homeowner services coordinator, is doing an intake and getting a lot of the information from a homeowner only to kind of duplicate that work when Sean and Christina were having to do the intake on their end as well. We thought we were trying to take some of that burden off the city to make it more affordable. But we just want to be able to do repairs because, as Stephanie mentioned, you know, every house that we are able to rehab is another house that we don't have to try to build from scratch to house somebody else. We're able to also work with a lot of student groups in the area. We work with the M A T C Carpentry Program, and the, Fort Riley has a program for exiting service members to learn the trades called the Home Builders Institute. We also work with Job Corps students and the new program of Youth Build Students. And so on top of all of this, we are able to leverage that to bring down, as build up the, the future workforce who's going to be making it more affordable to do repairs in the future. So we have had projects like the one that went through SHIPO and that have had major hurdles and cost a lot of time and a lot of money on the city's end, on our end, trying to get things across the line. And, you know, we always found, even more surprises, when we tore off the old porch, we found that there were floor joists that were rotten out that we had to replace, and we were able to squeeze that in through a partnership with a contractor who helped us work with our students to make that happen. So, yeah, I think I'll leave it there.
Thank you, Cody. I just, I think I'd like to clarify, yes, we're talking about shifting some priorities within the CDBG program, but we're not talking about eliminating housing rehab altogether or even putting it on pause for nine months. That's, you know, we've, we've discussed, or we're starting to discuss, other sources of funding within the city budget that can be used for this with less administrative headaches on both sides. And that, is that correct? Am I understanding that?
That is. We, so in August, we weren't, or actually in July, we were not accepting any more new applications. As I mentioned, we didn't even get our 2024 funding agreement from HUD until middle of September. So they are correct. We have not accepted those housing applications. But that's not to imply that you would have commissioners, you would have to wait until next year at some point to identify a source. You could give us direction this evening, and we could go and start looking at alternatives and working through that, that series of applications that Habitat has. That's really what the conversation this evening is for, is to see if you're inclined to, to alter our priorities within CDBG, Mayor, as you mentioned, and if you would like us to look at other alternative funding sources for housing rehab.
Hey, kids.
I know.
Peter, I think you were first.
So.
Is there no more public comment?
Is there?
Actually, sorry.
Yeah, let's see that.
We should continue with public comment. Would anyone else like to make some remarks?
Is that Josh required?
Good evening. Josh Brewer, Executive Director, Habitat for Humanity, Northern Flint Hills. Y'all hear a lot from me, so I thought it'd be helpful to hear from some of our staff tonight who've worked on this program. Our organization believes that everyone deserves a decent place to live, and I think, as evidenced by some of the discussion tonight, that is not true in this community. We are working to make that a reality. Not everyone has a decent place to live currently here. We see that need every day, and we have a great team that tries to bring resources to bear, no matter how difficult. They bring those resources to bear to solve the housing needs of this community. One of the most important programs we have for doing that is home preservation. We know we need to build more housing, but we cannot even talk about making up the gap in our inventory if we can't preserve the existing housing stock, much of which is going to be the workforce housing of tomorrow. It's built right now. We just need to preserve it. CDBG is one of the most important tools in our toolkit here in the city of Manhattan. So, you know, what is CDBG? According to HUD, the Community Development Block Grants Program provides an annual grant on a formula basis to states, cities, counties to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing and a suitable living environment, and by expanding the economic opportunities principally for low to moderate-income persons. That's HUD's definition. I'm concerned when I look at this chart and I see a proposed allocation of funding away from housing, when housing, when providing decent housing is one of the principal priorities of one of HUD's longest-standing programs. Now, I'm a data person too, but I'm more of a process person. And I do have significant concerns with the process of how these decisions are being made, how they have been made. The funding, the program, as I stated in open public comment, this program is paused. It does not have the staff. The staff were eliminated, and the program was paused. And by extension, we lost one of the critical tools for us to be able to serve this population, so our program's paused. We have one funding source that can go up to 12-5. If, if the project goes over 12-5 and we don't have our own gap funding for it, the project dies. Now, when we dig into this data, we see that from, you know, 1999 to 2016, we had 227 homes served, 12 homes a year. We see over the course of that data set, we see a decrease in performance. Now, I don't think that's CDBG's fault. And obviously, you know, there were staffing changes within the program. I don't think that's become public information as to, you know, whether that was due to performance issues or what. But I do know from our experience, we are able to deliver the results of this program in a more efficient way, a more effective way. When we talk about longer delivery times, 478 days, I know that project. That's Mr. and Ms. McCorkle. Mr. McCorkle fell and hit his head and died. Ms. McCorkle died before this project was completed. And we deal with that. That's on us, because this is our responsibility. We don't walk away from it. And so we know these delivery times, and every single week when we have traction, we talk about where our estimates at, where our biz at, where's our projects at? And Cody finds a way to get it done, and Emily finds a way to get it funded. And that's why I take particular offense to this distinction, this mischaracterization of program delivery cost as being admin. Those folks are not admin. Those are a vital community resource that gets these projects across the line. Now, I mean, maybe it's been decided that these funds will be reallocated to an ADA plan. That's not been made in a public process. No citizen participation has been engaged in that process. I am all for having that conversation for the next five-year plan, but there has been no conversation about this program and why it was suspended. Because Ms. Dot, she's not getting her accessibility grant. For her, this program is suspended. Now, there is a model with Truman Habitat, we've shared that with the city, to enter into a contractual agreement. We are seeking a contractual agreement with the city so that we can continue to deliver on these funds. Can I finish on that?
Finish your paragraph.
Okay. So that we can deliver on these funds. Partnership building is core to Habitat's model, and I've said from the very beginning, we are seeking a mutually beneficial partnership with the city of Manhattan, and we believe that we can do this. And I'll leave you with, again, what Kelman said earlier, what kind of community do we want Manhattan to be? I want to live in a community that sees its neighbors and works with them so that they can live decent lives.
Josh?
What's the finance, the fiscal note on this? What, what, if we had a contract with Habitat, what would the fiscal note be?
I mean, we can do this now, yeah. So if we look at the housing rehab program right now, program delivery is currently set at 90,500. We can deliver this program for significantly less than that. If you'd like the hard numbers, I can produce those by the end of the week. As far as direct program expenses, we would like to see some of that program delivery cost reallocated in direct cost so that we can, you know, actually tie this to projects. MHA modernization, I assume that would just go directly to them for their existing modernization. I'm not sure if that's continued for the year or not. But we know that we can, we can perform on this section of the grant more efficiently, more effectively, and we leverage and match funds. So it isn't CDB, just CDBG that's come to the table. It's AHP, it's Home Depot Foundation, it's GMCF Foundation, it's all the volunteer hours. We're making these dollars go much further because our model is more effective. Stand for any other questions.
Thank you, Josh.
There's one thing that taxpayers dislike. My name's Thomas Weeks, by the way, I signed in earlier. There's one thing that taxpayers dislike, and it's taxes. There's one thing that they absolutely hate, and it's waste. Wasting the taxpayers' money is the worst thing that we can do. So when Stephanie said, hey, in the idea of efficiency, maybe we could reallocate these funds and do something different with them, we have a sales tax fund that we don't allocate. We have $900,000 just sitting. So we are taking taxpayer money and we are not allocating them. We have a program that's running, and now we're pausing it, which is going to cause us to just accrue more funds. So my request of you all is to unpause the program and then continue the conversation like Josh said. Let's make a plan, let's talk about it, but just sitting on these funds while we have homes that are further in disrepair is frustrating. I have a cousin, he had a stroke, blind, has two kids, has a hard time taking care of his house. He had doors that didn't work properly, he had a roof that had like four sets of shingles on it when he bought it that he didn't know about, and he needed a new roof. He didn't have the ability to even talk with a contractor about what his house was like. He just knew his family members were mentioning, hey, we got to do something here, but he was struggling. He talked to the, the city that, it's not Manhattan, but the city that he lives in that has this program, and they said, hey, this is a great opportunity. We have a contract with Habitat. He called Habitat, they said, great, we have a process. They walked him through it, they got all the bids, they got the work done, and- They walked him through it, they got all the bids, they got the work done, and he is a part of that program, and he now gets to stay in his home. He got a new roof and new doors, and he's blind. This is very important to our community. It's not just about efficiency, it's about our people. And yes, I understand that we have a lot of money going to admin, but how can we use that money that we have? We have a lot of money just sitting that could go to fixing things. Josh is ready, the whole team is ready to do the thing. So if we're going to change the program, it's fair, it makes sense. If it's not efficient, it's not a good use of our funds, we should decide that as a community and make that change later, but keep the door open and allow us to keep making repairs. So, thanks.
Well, good evening. I'm Brad Hartenstein, I'm the Executive Director and Officer of the Flin Hills Area Builders Association. And I'm 2911 Marlet, by the way. I just want to say thank you for opening your ears, your eyes. Stephanie, wonderful presentation. Thank you for giving me more information than we had before. Mayor Adam Chek, you directed that, you know, we're not abandoning this, we're finding a way to get around it. But I'd encourage you as our leaders of our community, and Josh and his team as leaders, to keep this communication line open. I appreciate the time you've spent on this, the things that you're going to do in the future, and the fact that these folks back here have some answers. If it works together, let's make it work for the best of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could you tell us your name again? Sir, can you just repeat your name, please?
Brad Hartenstein.
Is there anyone else? I see two people who we've not seen at the podium yet, and one who likes to return from time to time. Any last comments or any additional comments?
Gary Olds, 3308 Frontier Circle. Just a question for the commission, clarity. Can you, can any of you tell me what those other funding sources are that she mentioned? What were they?
Workforce housing.
General funds is what I heard, general funds.
And also the economic development tax.
Workforce tax, okay, thank you. That's what I was trying to, because from the, from a general fund standpoint, I'm not sure you've got any money in there to do that. Maybe you can allocate it and switch it around, but it's a very, very good presentation and the information. And no doubt that housing rehab is important in terms of the issue and trying to find the funds for it, private and public. I'm not big on the public, I'm more big on the private, but sometimes it doesn't work out that way. And I would just encourage you, as someone just mentioned, Brad, to keep the discussion going and trying to figure this out in terms of funding sources. But obviously, when we talk about taxes, yeah, those are taxes, but those taxes are a long way from Manhattan, Kansas. Most people here in town are concerned about a tax called property tax, and you know that well. So, please, don't make that a funding source.
Thank you, Gary. Anyone else, additional comments? Thank you. Seeing no one else approaching the podium, we will close public comments. My computer just closed as well. Commissioners, additional comments, remarks, questions?
Yeah, okay, so Stephanie, if we were to allocate CDBG funds in a contract to Habitat, would we still have the same amount of administrative overhead for each individual project?
That checklist that I referred to? Yes.
Okay. If we decided that we wanted to take $100,000 a year, say, just throwing that out, from the Workforce Housing Sales Tax Fund, of which we, we currently have quite a good balance, how long would it take us to draft an agreement with Habitat and allow them to start working on projects, do you think?
I am not the best person to answer that.
Or any, anyone.
Well, there would need to be a discussion about just what it is you're trying to accomplish and whether or not you want to see if there's anybody else that can do it as well.
Okay.
You know, for homes in 20-some years, there are obviously other contractors in the community that perform this work.
Sure.
And when we go out for those types of services, typically, we put them in a bid package, an RFP, and we look for results that you all can analyze.
Is, but I mean, we're not talking about like individual projects. I'm thinking more of like a.
A service agreement.
Service agreement with Habitat to run a housing rehab program. Is that something that we would still need to do an RFP for?
I mean, you, you could talk about a different structure. Again, when we look at it from the type of work that we typically go out and take requests for proposals or qualifications, we're looking to maximize those tax dollars in our community. So there's a comparison that's, that's we typically conduct.
Can we clarify? So in January, a pilot program was launched with Habitat, is that correct? I've heard that, is that right?
I actually don't think it was January. So we.
I might have made up.
We did a pilot with them, I think it was actually last fall is when that started, and it was on a project, and it was to start working through, there was no formal agreement or MOU. It was to begin working through that checklist to see what they could do, what staff could do, and what efficiencies we could create through that partnership. And so we did, I think actually maybe five projects in 2023, where Habitat was either a contractor or they were a dual contractor. So some of the work Habitat couldn't perform themselves, so we still had to work with an HVAC company or an electrician or some of that.
But that was on, we were coordinating that?
As, yeah, we would bid it out as a contractor, so they were bidding as, as any other contractor would do. There's maybe one that we worked with them directly on because of the cost threshold, we didn't have to go competitively for bids.
Okay, and I'm going to ask Josh a question. There was, there was a comment about matching some funds. So when, when, if the bid, I'm going to say, if the bid for a project is awarded to you, occasionally you can contract, or you can match some or bring in some additional funding?
Yeah, so, so in many cases, so CDBG's threshold is 25,000.
Right.
So in many cases, a project could exceed the $25,000 threshold. And so in cases where we wouldn't be self-performing the work, if we would have to sub the work, or if the city were to contract it out separately, you know, a for-profit HVAC company, they're going to eat up quite a bit of that, or if there's a steep slope, it's going to eat it up. So what we would then do is we would leverage or match those funds. We'd go out and get FHLB, which is, they run an affordable housing program, or we would use some first-in funds. So like Home Depot Foundation is a good one, American. And so that, that makes those 25,000 go further.
But that leverage doesn't depend on it being CDBG funds, it's just funds, correct?
In some cases it does. So the one that comes to mind is, is called VHRMP. That's a, a program for disabled veterans, and that does have a specific federal leverage requirement. In some cases, the way you put together that package is not dependent on the source of funds, but that's an example where sometimes the federal source is important.
Okay, were, was Habitat the one, like, who's receiving the applications for the housing rehab? I, I think I was a little.
It depends.
Confused.
If it's a project that the city knows that we, so before we engaged with Habitat, we would do that ourselves. Or sometimes you would receive an application and say, hey, I think you should go for the city. Or I think even in some cases, we would receive an application, maybe they didn't income qualify, we would send them to Habitat. So my understanding is that we'd kind of pass applications back and forth to see which program it fit best under. And then there was, there, there were some growing pains in the information that HUD wants. It's in a very particular format or type. And so if that form didn't match, our staff would go back and, and add to it.
Okay.
So we were, yes, they were typically the ones accepting those applications and then forwarding them on.
And so just to clarify on our process, what we do is through our homeowner services intake, is we receive an application from an individual that describes demographics, statement of need, kind of the whole situation. So Emily puts together a strategy that includes a funding strategy, but also a construction strategy and social services. So oftentimes, you're not just meeting a construction need. So you're meeting that homeowner where they are. Now, once we need the funding, that's where CDBG would come in as a reimbursement basis. So, I mean, sort of what Kirk talked about was when we have first-in funds that are specific for veterans, for example, part of that strategy is to make sure you have the reimbursement from a CDBG or outside the city limits, that's USDA. So we use USDA outside the city limits, in the city limits, CDBG, and then we can add AHP or VHRMP depending on their demographics.
And that's a program you have done for some time prior to receiving the contracts for CDBG, or?
Which program?
The, no, I'm sorry, not the, just the intake of, of people applying for.
Oh.
Housing rehab or different programs like that. That's, that's an established process you guys have had.
It is, and then that's something four years ago that I identified right off the bat, was we, we have two parallel programs going on. It was clear that there was not a understanding of what Habitat's capacity was. I think because we don't do as much new construction in the city, we haven't built a new house in the city since 2017. There was a thought that what Habitat could provide was simply home maintenance services. So, so there was some education, I think with Sean, as to what we did, and then as Cody spoke to, then there was some concerns that because our services were so cost-effective, it wouldn't be fair to bid against them in an open process. So we were disqualified for bidding, from bidding for, for quite a while. So we worked through that process, process with them, and what we ended up, before we were able to actually bid, was just saying, okay, what are you going to scope out to bid and what can we just take off to another grant? And then eventually, we entered into the, the process where we would be kind of front of house and the city could be back house. Now, I think what we found pretty quickly was there was some historic management of this program that was maybe above and beyond. So there, there's definitely some efficiencies and quite a bit of overlap between our two programs. That's why I'm, I'm very confident that we can provide a more cost-effective solution.
So what's the disconnect between these two organizations? How do we, how do we make this work? Or with, with N, or how do, like, yeah, what's the disconnect?
Commissioner Opel, thank you for asking that question. I'm, I'm actually meeting with Josh next week. I'm happy to sit down and continue having these conversations, working with our community partners to make a solution for housing rehabilitation. What I'm hearing from the commissioners, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but housing rehabilitation is certainly important for all of us. And so what I'm hearing from this conversation this evening is that you do want staff to continue looking into how we can provide a housing rehabilitation program. So I think one of the other things we would potentially be looking for direction on this evening is if using workhouse, or workforce housing, sales tax dollars, funds would make sense for the housing rehabilitation program. And if you all provide direction that you would like to go that route possibly this evening, we could work with legal and drafting an amendment to the resolution that you all have to make sure that that is an eligible program for our workhouse, workforce housing.
I think we're all in agreement that this is a very important topic, and it's very important that we continue rehabbing so many houses in Manhattan. Just sometimes a wheelchair ramp will enable people to stay in their home. I mean, this is just crazy to, you know. I, I think we're also under agreement that, that HUD, I mean, CDBG is very cumbersome, and 35% admin just kind of makes me sad because we could be doing so many other things with, with those dollars. And I'm not blaming Stephanie, I mean, it's, I know dealing with HUD is like, yeah. So I would, yeah, encourage Danielle to get together with Josh, and I don't know how you can, I mean, we do have to be open to having other groups be able to work with these rehab things. But Habitat brings to us such a wide variety of volunteers possibilities and, you know, Home Depot possibility, just a lot of things which would enable us to do a lot more housing rehab with the same number of dollars. I want to add that I'm kind of upset that we are having this, this discussion in October. I think this was a discussion we should have had in June or maybe May. We are a commission and we are not management. We hired someone to be our manager. But there've been a number of things from various department heads announced that have not had our sort of stamp of approval, and I'm, I'm concerned about this. I don't like coming late to the party, so to speak. So Danielle, I think you know how I feel, and I, we, we had a program a long time ago that was just, maybe in the 90s, I'm dating myself. Of course, the 60s date me, but anyway, that really just did sort of small things, you know, light bulbs changing and that kind of thing. And, and I'd like to see if we can sort of wrap our arms around some of those things that really do make a difference for people staying in their home, you know, having a front porch light that works, that kind of thing. So that's where I'm coming from.
I mean, I think Karen said at the beginning, that putting that in workforce housing would open the door for other potential contractors, which would mean we'd have to set up the, would we then have to be the intake on those projects or those requests?
I think there's a lot of different ways we could structure this, going back to what Danielle said. If, if there is direction, we can work through what some of those options might be.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm using workforce housing, I think that this fits right in that pay band. It, Josh said, you know, it's going to be future starter homes. We're not going to be building new starter homes, because that's just not economically feasible. So the more houses that we can keep livable in our existing stock also help that, so let's, yeah.
Danielle, do you feel that you have adequate direction from the commission at this point?
I do, yes, thank you.
All right. I think we will wrap on that topic. As this was a discussion item, we will not take any motions. The final item on the agenda is city manager update. Danielle, have you any comments for us?
I'm going to go to the podium.
Ooh, this is a new thing.
It's not a little old-fashioned that way.
First of all, thank you, Mayor and City Commission. Quick update, the day seven, working for the city of Manhattan. I want to thank everyone, the commissioners, the community partners, city staff, for the very warm welcome that I have received coming on board. So far, have definitely had an opportunity to sit down, first of all, with Deputy City Manager Jason Hillgers. He's been incredibly generous with his time and getting me caught up to speed on all the work that you have been doing, not only since April, but for the last several years as well. We are a city and we work on projects that a lot of times take two, three, five, 10 years. And so really, just getting caught up on all the work that has been happening. Really looking forward, department directors have reached out and put a time on my calendar for me to go meet with their teams, tour their facilities, and then hear about all of their individual projects as well. Very excited to be able to do this. Also, as I mentioned just a minute ago, reaching out to community partners, having an opportunity to sit down with them, some of them more pressing, for example, the conversation we're having with Habitat for Humanity, but also sitting down with other partners like the school district today. And I know I have meetings with chamber members and going to the chamber retreat later this week as well. So just really looking forward to integrating with the community and getting to work, rolling up my sleeves and, and really getting to work. So it is my understanding that we go over upcoming meetings that you all have. We have established business leaders luncheon, so that's on Friday, November 1st at Rockin' Case. K's. If you would like to attend that, please RSVP by October 24th. Do you all usually get a rundown of who is attending at this time?
Once we have responded.
Okay, all right. So we also have the November Military Relations Committee Luncheon. That is on Wednesday, November 6th. That will be at the Four Point Sheridan, if you are interested in attending that. That is RSVP by Thursday, October 31st. We have our joint city-county-county meeting on Thursday, November 21st. We will be hosting. If you have any items that we need to talk about, we need those by November 14th. So I'll be working with our city staff, seeing if there's anything that we need to bring up as well, but if you all have anything, we can certainly talk about that as well. And then we also have our intergovernmental luncheon on Monday, November 25th at the Holiday Inn at campus. Again, items are due by Tuesday, November 19th.
Excuse me?
I think it's at the university.
It's usually at the university.
Holiday Inn at the campus. So yes, the university?
No.
There was one, you were going to have to move.
They might have to move out first.
Okay.
We will double check, no, you're fine. We will double check. I will make a note to double check that.
They, they have occasionally, this year, they've used several different venues within the union, but they've been in the
Might be having a big convention there.
Yeah. Or maybe they just want to have a holiday party.
We will, we will double check location.
Thank you.
Also invitations, you receive an invitation for the 39th Annual Military Ball. That is on Saturday, November 2nd. That is at the Hilton Garden Conference Center. And so if you would like to attend that, please RSVP to the city clerk's office by this Thursday as well. So that deadline is coming up pretty quickly if you're planning on attending that. Is there anything the commissioners would like to ask, or I would stand, happy to stand for any questions that you all have today?
I do not. Thank you for the updates.
Absolutely.
Anybody else? Congratulations, everyone. We actually are finishing eight minutes under our deadline. Is there a move to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Move to adjourn the October 22nd, 2024 work session.
Second.
Jared, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Opel, yes. Commissioner Minton?
Yes.
Mayor Adam Chek?
Yes.
Commissioner McCollough?
Yep.
Motion passes.
And just thank you all again for your presentations tonight and for your commitment to this.